The open budget hearing will come to order. We're actually doing our open budget hearing this evening to be followed by the regular school committee meeting, as is our tradition. If you would please join me in pledging allegiance to our flag and our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have an abbreviated budget presentation that we've asked Dr. Pavlicek to run through. The much more detailed presentations that we gave to the warrant committee and to the parent-teacher organization briefing are up on the website.
Mary, just going to start.
Good evening. We're going to do, as Chairman Walker said, an abbreviated presentation of the Milton Public School FY16 budget proposal. And for those of you who have attended one of our sessions or seen this presentation, please bear with us. But for those who haven't been with us, we developed the budget working with the leadership team, principals, department heads. And every Tuesday morning, Glenn Pavlicek, Janet Chan, and I meet with Finance Subcommittee Chairman Mary Kelly, Mike Zulis, and Leroy Walker. And we work collaboratively to develop this budget during the budget season, during November, December, really, starting in December and January. We communicate. I believe the submission had to be in early December to the warrant committee?
In December, yeah.
We submit our budget to the warrant committee, and they have a school committee, subcommittee. We present to them. They use this space right here, or we go to town hall. Then they forward questions. They go through every line of our budget. They work collaboratively with us, along with all the departments in town. We present our budget, and we meet with the warrant committee, who are the -- their charge volunteers. Their charge is to propose a balanced budget to town meeting. And so we're going to go over our FY16 budget with you tonight. To put this in context...
Left-hand one.
I'll let you do it. Two years ago, the school committee said to the leadership team, what are the needs of the district? And based on the student data, what are the initiatives to move the -- what are the initiatives to move the district ahead? And in this very space, we met with 26 principals, assistant principals, curriculum directors, and we brainstormed. We brainstormed the elimination of fees, the arts. And based on our student data, we identified, two years ago, emphasizing early literacy. We looked at our student data, our MCAS scores at the end of grade three. And since we've identified that goal, you will see in national literature, in your local newspapers, you'll see on all educational journals, that really, the goal of all children reading at grade level at the end of grade three is an indicator of success. And so based on our MCAS data, we knew we had work to do in reaching that goal. We also identified, from the MCAS data, that we had proficiency gaps in -- for some of our subgroups: special education, African-American blacks, and children whose families have identified as low-income. So we identified, at different levels in the district, those subgroups based on their MCAS data. And then based on our data, we knew that we had issues at some of our levels in our science MCAS scores. So for the last two years, last year, again, based on the data, we knew we had identified the correct areas, and we were making some advancements, understanding that these are not initiatives that could be corrected in a year, but we're closely following the data and checking and monitoring the data and reporting out at these school committee meetings. So we want to, again, our proposal for next year, the advancement budget, just quickly detail for you what we're -- and if you look at the larger presentation, you'll see what the purchases were, the budget items, in the last two years. And again, we work with Finance Subcommittee, and our goal is, what are the positions? What are the personnel? What are the curriculum? And what are the supports that we need to drive the system and make improvements in those advancement areas? So last year, the school committee and the leadership team identified, and you see all the national research about preschool, and the dollars that are put into preschool, how -- what an impact it makes to identify students who aren't in a formal preschool and to give them the instruction. So we piloted this year, and we're looking to expand that pilot next year. So one is to expand the part-time person to a full-time person for our district-wide preschool, $30,000. That's a personnel request under the early literacy initiative. And the instructional supports, very briefly, would be $5,000 for additional materials. That wouldn't be in our regular budget. That's why we're asking for these items under the advancement budget. Again, at the elementary level, we're identifying, and again, you understand the research about longer school days, longer school years, that implement Saturday program for rising third graders next year. We've identified that as the divide at third grade exists, then it gets wider and wider. So we see our internal assessments at one and two, but then at grade three, when children they learn to read at grades one and two, then they read to learn at three, if we can give them supports in the summer. $50,000 in additional professional development around early literacy and Reader's Writer's Workshop, really to finish that initiative with all of our teachers. And $20,000 to complete the purchase of leveled readers. Elementary parents understand how we put the Reader's Writer's Workshop in our elementary schools, and this is really to finish the purchase of the materials. So in the early literacy, those are our advancement requests for next year.
So for closing the proficiency gaps, our budget request for next year for new positions would be an interim high school reading specialist who will provide targeted assistance for students identified as at-risk by class performance, internal assessments, and/or MCAS. We have another interim -- another request for an interim reading specialist at the elementary level for grades four and five. And these positions are referred to as interim positions because these are students who have not had the benefit of the reading specialists who are put into place in grades one, two, and three from our previous advancement budget initiatives. For instructional support, we have three programs. The budget request is to continue these programs, which have proven to be very successful. Students are being monitored. We have data to support the continuation of these programs. We have the Calculus Project, $25,000 is the request for that project. This would continue targeted summer pre-teaching sessions for our grade seven students to achieve the honors math track through Calculus. We have the Pierce Academy, again, an established program. The request is for $20,000 to, again, continue the targeted extended-day instruction for students who are identified as at-risk. And then we also have the Successful High School Bridge Program, and we are requesting $10,000, again, for targeted summer instruction to ensure their success as they move to grade Additionally, for instructional support, we are requesting $20,000 for elementary extended day or extended-year programs. Again, targeted instruction, this is all based on data analysis. Each school has a program in place for extended day or extended school year. We're looking for $20,000 for assessment software for the middle school and high school. Looking at two programs right now, either the Edwin Teaching and Learning, that is -- has been developed by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And we're also looking at the Galileo Assessment System. $10,000 for a summer professional development institute, a variety of offerings to support teachers in closing the proficiency gap. And then $8,000 for a new writing program at the middle school. Again, these are all items that have been identified through data analysis and leadership teamwork, as noted by Superintendent Guomly.
In the advancing science and STEM program area, we have requesting one new 0.8 full-time equivalent position, a middle school STEM technology teacher. This is to reorganize elective offerings and so that all students will be able to take advantage of either STEM electives or what we call iSTEM electives, which are intensive studies in STEM, which are more advanced electives. So it's a .8 teacher to allow us to offer more at the middle school in terms of science electives. Also, we have, in the support category, $25,000 in additional materials, such as the project Lead the Way curriculum, which will be used in the iSTEM courses. We also need to get some more equipment for the expansion of the STEM program into grade four. That's the $10,000 for tech equipment and supplies. We've been rolling up the STEM program through the English Innovation Pathway, and we now want to expand it up one more year, so that'll take us to grade four. And $35,000 to purchase elementary science materials for K-1 and 2. We have purchased -- this is not STEM, this is science, the regular science curriculum that all students have. We had new science materials in the upper grades, but we hadn't added new science materials in the K-1 and 2 realm. At the high school, we need to update some of our biotech equipment. We have a great biotech lab downstairs, and we've been keeping up all these years, originally donated through the Milton Foundation for Education, but we have to update some of the equipment, and it is -- it's hard to think of it as now being close to 10 years old, but it is. And so we need to update some of the equipment in that lab, and we also need to introduce more digital equipment. Currently, there's a lot of analog equipment still in our science classes, and that is older technology. The other two pieces are professional development, again, a summer professional development institute on science and STEM, and in-year professional development for the teachers and the use of the elementary, middle, and high science materials. So with the new materials that you purchase, you have to have training as well for the teachers to make optimal use of them. So that's our advancement budget request for fiscal '16. And this is the chart that, again, is online. We've seen it before in our previous presentations. It grant total amounts at $591,000. Much of this, 403,000 of it, is in fact what we're referring to as one-time funds. These are expenditures that will happen for fiscal '16, but would not recur beyond that. They're one-time expenditures of money. That is important more for the warrant committee, who is trying to -- who are trying to parcel out what parts of budget could be spent through their supply of one-time funds, notably free cash, as opposed to having to spend recurring appropriations on them. So in quick summary, our budget request is for $41,94,050, an increase of $1.7 million over last year, a 4.4 percent increase. Again, in our previous presentations and the ones you'll find online, there's a breakdown of exactly what makes up this number, how much of it is salaries, how much of it is different pieces. And this is a breakdown, again, for the warrant committee, that the -- we have an increase. If you only look at the recurring funds, it's about, again, 4.5 percent, once you back out some of the one-time funds from this year's budget and from our proposal for next year. After that proposal, the warrant committee, of course, is in the process of trying to put together a town budget, has made some preliminary estimates on revenue, has looked at the requests from all the town departments, and, as we've talked about over the last few meetings, has asked us to come up with a scenario in which we would have a $500,000 cut from our request. And they've asked us to say what we would do in that scenario. So let me -- we'll take a quick walk through that one as well.
And so these budget reductions, we -- the leadership team is charged with coming up with reductions. We meet as a group. We look at the entire district. We look at administrative support, teaching, text materials and supplies. We work with the Finance Subcommittee, and we make a proposal to the warrant committee. Again, they said that there would have to be reductions to $500,000 of our existing budget. What we've done is gone out to cancel several PTO sessions due to the snow. We had a PTO presentation. We've gone out to several groups. And now tonight, after this finish -- this presentation, we'll hear from parents and citizens again, and the school committee, what's happened over the past years, will work with us. Again, are these the recommended cuts and reductions we're going to make, or are we going to make any changes based on feedback we get from parents and citizens? So district-wide, one of the recommended reductions is a Special Education Secretary. There are two administrative assistants in that office. One of the support staff would be eliminated. The second recommended cut would be a $27,000 to special ed transportation. Dr. Pavlicek, charting special education transportation over the past years, looking at the anticipated enrollment next year, is recommending that we can make that reduction. Dr. Pavlicek has also put the system on a copier replacement program, and we're putting up a $5,000 delay in the machine replacement system-wide. The next reduction is in professional development, again, very different from the advancement professional development, and this would eliminate some of the non-advancement professional development initiatives that we had planned for this coming summer and next school year. And the next would be a $20,000 recommended elimination of text materials and supplies district-wide. And again, that -- all of those reductions would directly impact the Milton Public Schools, but the charge from the warrant committee is that we had to make recommended reductions to the number of $500,000. We then looked at the elementary level. And again, I think it's important to explain that we do this as a team. We don't tell the high school team to come back and report out. I've said we do this collaboratively. We look at -- you could have the high school principal could give this presentation. The first recommended reduction is going to be reduce grades four and five art from 45 minutes to 30 minutes. We've worked over the years to increase the art. Anyone who's been in those elementary classrooms remembers their own art experience, elementary, middle, and high, knows that a 30-minute period is really difficult to set up an art project and complete an art project in the fourth and fifth grade. But we would bring back those classes to 30 minutes each. We would reduce kindergarten art and music to every other week. We said we have over 300 parents and guardians enrolling in full-day kindergarten. At the elementary level, children have physical education once a week, library every other week, art, music, and this would be a reduction at the elementary level, at the kindergarten level, to rotate back and forth. Right now, kindergarten children have art and music every week. The next recommended cut and reduction, we have moved back over the years. To begin with, fourth and fifth grade students had chorus and music. We then creeped back and was -- we were able to have chorus and music at the fifth grade. If you had the fine arts director here, Dr. Norrie Diamond-Birdetts, she'd tell you there are very two different music classes. We're proposing to eliminate grade-five chorus. If we looked at all of the art and music teachers district-wide, the number of courses, classes that they would be teaching next year, and the partial cuts in those positions would total the elimination of two teachers in the art and music area, which would total $90,000. The next proposed cut and reduction is for a .5 preschool coordinator. When we built our budget, our preschool has grown from one class that was housed at Milton High School 10, 12 years ago to four classes. Anyone who's been at the Colley-Cott Cunningham understands the thriving preschool, and it's under the direction of the Colley-Cott Principal and the Spen Director, the Pupil Personnel Director. What we were saying with the initiative of the district-wide preschool, the preschool program at the high school, and our integrated preschool at Colley-Cott, it was really demanding someone to oversee all those programs. But again, we would defer that .5 position, and that would be another cut or reduction to our budget. And the final elementary recommended reduction and cut would be one of the two teachers in the step class at the Glover School. That class has two certified teachers in it and para-professionals, and the recommended cut was to eliminate one of the two teachers in the step program. So those were the recommended cuts, reductions at the elementary level, again, working as a team towards that, what was going to be the impact of the $500,000 reduction.
So the proposed reductions at the middle school level, first would be to eliminate one history teacher, and this would impact the team model that has been so effective at the middle school. The -- while students would still have the history classes, the history teacher would not be part of each of the teams and would be working sort of outside of the team. The model now allows for collaboration among all of the teachers who work with the individual middle schoolers on the particular assigned team, and this is a -- this would be a change and would really not allow that middle school concept. There is also a proposal to reduce by .2 an art teacher, a music teacher, and a computer teacher. This would reduce offerings in each of these subject areas and would provide less choice for students, and it would also increase class size in other electives. And the last reduction at the middle school level would be replacing one assistant principal with a dean, and the dean would take over -- thank you. The dean would have many of the responsibilities of an assistant principal. However, there would be some duties that would be placed on the principal and the one assistant principal, and one of those would be supervision and evaluation. The dean would focus on behavioral and academics, but there are many responsibilities that the assistant principal takes on that would no longer be the case. And those responsibilities would lie with, again, the principal and existing assistant principal. So the history teacher, the reduction would be $57,000. The art, music, and computer teachers would be $27,000, and replacing the assistant principal with the dean would be a reduction of $40,000.
At the high school level, we would lose one teacher in the world language department. This would eliminate the non-immersion French courses at the high school, so students coming in to the high school and opting a new language would choose between Spanish and Latin. They wouldn't have the opportunity of taking French because that will force students into Latin and Spanish. Those classes would grow. It may have some effect on the AP offerings in those subjects as if those courses are small. We'll have to see how that works. They might have, again, AP class combined with a Level VI course or something like that, where they may have to restructure some of the world language classes at that level. And again, the other reductions are a .2 reduction, so basically, one class each of art, music, business technology, family and consumer studies. Again, the reduction in elective courses, reducing the scope of elective offerings available at the high school, and you would see increases in the elective size. What exactly this would be depends a lot on student choice at the high school. Unlike the other schools, these electives are, you know, are choice-driven. They have a menu of classes to choose from, and the ones, basically, that have enough demand are the ones that get offered. So it's -- at this point, it's not clear which of those individual courses they would be, would have a lot to do with the elective choosing that's actually going on right now for next year. In total, you're looking at a loss of 7.9 equivalent positions to reduce by $500,000. One note on this, again, this is what we've been asked to produce for the warrant committee. They suggested $500,000 as the target we should start with. Again, they're being very conservative in their estimates of revenue and so forth. You may, by reading the papers, have heard the governor has released his initial budget proposal this afternoon. It's now just been published. We've got some of the details on it. The good news is that between -- he's proposing a $77,000 increase for Milton in Chapter 70 aid. We would get about $20,000 increase in charter tuition reimbursement. So there's about $100,000 in education aid if his proposal were to carry for Milton. And again, this is step one. We have the governor, then we'll have the House, then we'll have the Senate, then we'll have conference committees, so it's got a ways to go yet. Unrestricted aid for the town is also up by $100,000, unrestricted local aid. And the estimated charges to the town are actually down by $50,000, primarily due to a big dip in retired teachers' health insurance. So were the governor's proposal to carry for it as proposed, it would mean an additional $250,000 in local aid to Milton. As I say, don't spend it yet, but it is something that it's the first volley into the local aid picture. So we will have to see how this plays out as we go forward. But it's certainly good news in the sense that the number is positive and not negative. And so it will start on the track going forward. We'll eventually end up with a final proposal for town meeting at the first week of May, but it is initially where we are at the moment. But in the meantime, we are still working on the warrant committee's request of what would be the impact of a $500,000 reduction, because it's these kind of impact statements that they're going to use should more money become available to decide from the various departments where to push some of it back. So that is where we are on our budget presentation.
Thank you. Thank you. So the purpose of these public presentations is to get feedback. As you heard the superintendent and Dr. Pavlicek allude to, over the last three weeks, we've been making a number of these presentations. On February 24th, we made a presentation to the PTO organizations and received quite a bit of feedback there. On February 25th, we met with the warrant committee. They also had some feedback on the proposed reductions. And the purpose of this open budget hearing is... And the purpose of this open budget hearing is to get feedback as well. So is there anyone who would like to speak to fiscal 16 budget?
I don't know if those individuals are interested. Now with citizen speak.
So just to be clear, this is the open budget hearing. Right after this, we will open our regular school committee meeting for which we have citizen speak. So if you have budget comments, you could speak now or you could wait until citizen speak. So I have JP Plunkett and Rashron and Grace Marinici and
Marinelli.
Marinelli and
Now with citizen speak.
Okay, come on up.
Come to the table.
Yeah.
Microphone.
Just JP, if you give your name and address.
JP Plunkett, 1 Rogos Lane. I first quickly want to thank everybody here for the very fair and thorough English versus French presentation. It was last, I can't even keep track of time, whenever it was, a week or so ago. But wonderful, very, very pleased and grateful for how fair it was and thorough and well done, professionally done. So kudos to everybody. I'm reading this from my phone because my, my wife, who couldn't be here tonight, actually wrote this. So I agree with everything she's saying, but that's why I'm, I'm actually reading it.
So it's always good practice to say that on television.
And before you begin to read it, may I say something?
Sure.
Appropriate or not appropriate, I want to thank you for your comments that night. And so Mr. and Mrs. Plunkett put themselves forward as parents that any parent in the audience could call in contact about the English program and the STEM program in first grade. So I wanted to appreciate, tell you how much we appreciated that. And we also realized that in past years, we had parents part of the panel to Mr. Plunkett's and Mrs. Plunkett's help. We worked really hard on that presentation. I'll convey to the 15 administrators your appreciation. But next year, we will definitely have parents take questions from the audience and have them give their perspective.
I think that would just add to what was already a great event.
Thank you.
So appreciate it likewise. So good evening, school committee members. My name is JP Plunkett and I am the parent of a kindergartner and a third grader in the English program at Glover. I would like to express my concern over the proposed budget cut of one of the step teachers at Glover. I'm baffled as there, as are many other parents as to how this is even being considered. The program was just moved to Glover seven or so months ago and now there's an attempt to reorganize it. Please consider the negative impact this decision will have on the step students who are already experiencing a shakeup of their classroom setting in the fall when they move buildings. Another factor to consider is the current makeup of Glover and the lack of equitable classrooms in English. Glover houses a co-tod program which our son is in, the step program and an English program that has huge disparities in students' gender, economic backgrounds, ethnic backgrounds and learning abilities. How is losing a much-needed teaching staff member going to help this student population at Glover close our achievement gap? Thank you for your time and for your serious consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Anna?
I feel I should perhaps just say ditto. Hi there, my name's Anna Rostrin and I'm a mother of two boys at the Glover School.
If you just take the microphone to you, please.
Sure, is that better? Yeah?
Actually, you know what? They're asking if you could move to the seat over here. Sorry.
Sorry, I haven't done this before.
There's the other, the other microphone.
Testing. As I said, I'm a mother of two students at the Glover School. My son Harrison Barker is in the second grade English program, Mrs. Turner's class. My younger son Archie is in kindergarten where we're presently making the decisions about first grade selection. My husband, myself and other parents, as you know, are very concerned about the proposed budget cut of a step teacher at Glover School. Mrs. Turner's second grade English class has two stepkids in the classroom with the total number of students until recently totaling 25. With many of the other kids in special ed programs in that classroom and my son Harrison Barker is one of them, he's on an IEP, it is vital that the appropriate educational support is present. Cutting a special ed teacher would greatly affect this for all the kids. Presently, the step students in this classroom are keeping pace so well that one of the step educators can provide much-needed math and English support to that classroom. If you take away one of these, we fit, one of these educators, we fear that all the kids in this English classroom will suffer along with the step students schoolwide. Additionally, we ask that you take into consideration the step students whilst looking at the cap numbers within the classroom settings. The students, at least in my son's class, are present every day along with their aides and thus should not be ostracized from the class numbers. I've been an advocate of the English program until this year where I felt that parents' concerns about the class numbers and structures have not been taken seriously until recently. We wish to know how these concerns will be dealt with before the new school year occurs, especially for Mrs. Turner's current class. Until my husband and I feel that these cuts and concerns are taken seriously, it is perhaps sad to say that we'll be putting our younger son forward for the French program. We just don't feel that we can be advocates this year of the, of the current second grade class structure and how things have been dealt with. So I hope that you can take our concerns seriously and, and we see some changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Grace? If you would, just give your name and address.
Good evening, can you hear me? Please, I'm nervous. My name's Grace Marinelli and I live at 154 Cabot Street in Milton. I am a co-president of FAME for the Milton Public Schools, which is Friends and Advocates of Music Education. And I am the representative to speak tonight. And we, first of all, would like to thank you for having, allowing us the opportunity to speak. And we as FAME realize that it's a very difficult thing to come up with these budget cuts and what you have to choose and the decisions you have to make. Once it was very eloquently explained to me that the number one priority is the students. And unfortunately, with this set of cuts, the music students are getting hurt across the board. Moving kindergarten to every other week disrupts the basic framework of music education. I have been in the classroom at Collycott Cunningham and Glover. Unfortunately, I haven't been at Tucker yet. I've seen what the kindergarten students do. They don't just sing and dance. They learn tempo, rhythm, beats, and yes, they are learning to read music. To move this class to every other week would disrupt that and disrupt the building blocks of music education in the future, where they go from there. And also disrupts the curriculum framework for music education set forth by the school. We're also cut, so we're cutting the elementary. We're also getting cut with a fifth grade chorus. If anybody's gone to the Pierce concerts and seen the sixth grade chorus, they're spectacular and the basis of that starts in elementary school with fifth grade. That's where they learn to get along and sing together and we'd hate to lose that. We're confused and a little concerned about the point two middle school teacher and point two high school teacher. We don't understand what it means. Will we lose a class? Will we lose classes? Will we lose half a teacher? Will we lose a job? Music education is part of a well-rounded education. And a well-rounded education is not a luxury, it's a necessity. Thank you for listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy?
Good evening, committee members. I, I didn't come tonight intending to speak, but I felt I wanted to once I got here. My family lives on Churchill's Lane in Milton. I have two sons, an 11th grader and a fifth grader at Cunningham, the fifth grader. And both of them are involved in, in music education. And I would, I would mirror what, what Grace has said and, and so eloquently, but I, and my experience is more anecdotal. But my 11th grader, music has been pivotal to not only his academic development, but his social acclimation at each, at each step up. He was in band at Glover when he went to Pierce. He knew those people and they were his social group. When he came to the high school and on his own came home with the permission slip for marching band at the end of eighth grade. And we couldn't have been more surprised. But in band camp, where he met other students who were freshmen, incoming freshmen like him, but seniors as well, he, he felt like he owned the place by the first day of school because he'd spent so much time here and he had upper-class friends. The kids in the music program mentor each other. They recognize how some of, everyone can do music. A child with an IEP, a child with a learning disability, a physical disability. And, and then the, the kids who are going to be superstars down the road and may make this their profession. Everyone can enjoy and experience music at some level. And our program as it is provides children with the opportunity to do ensemble work and experience it together and, and some to really excel on an individual basis through things like the semesba and the districts. The Great East, you know, is, is the culmination of the, of the music year in Pierce. And it's the work that all those kids put in in the choruses and the band and the strings, the things that take place out of school that these children spend their time on. Not everyone is going to be the quarterback. Not everyone is going to be a fantastic athlete or an honor student. But, but these groups are inclusive by their very nature, but also at the same time provide opportunities for children to excel at what they do. And I think it's part of keeping kids engaged in school. It's part of keeping them, keeping them coming to this place. And the, the ensemble work is, is the payoff for those boring lessons that you do around the edges and, and being with your friends and recognizing and applauding each other's talents. I mean, if you've ever sat in the, the stands at a football game, which I know you have, and, and heard the reaction to the pep band and to the marching band, it's, it's infectious in a good way. And these are, these are lifelong skills. These are inculcating our children into the cultural canon globally. You know, they learn classical music, they learn American jazz and swing and, and they become well-rounded people and they can carry this forward their whole lives. And, and I think the repetition at an early age in grade school through the weekly music classes, the recorder, you know, as basic as that seems, drills this into them and gives them something to carry forward for their whole lives. And I, I know you are faced with difficult, difficult weighing of priorities, but, but I hope you will consider not going forward with the music cuts as proposed. Thank you.
So in closing, I would say that we, we do appreciate this feedback. We do take it seriously. As I said, we, we began this process of public presentations about three weeks ago. I, I think it's fair to say we have received a considerable amount of feedback on the art and music cuts. We've received a considerable amount of feedback on the elimination of the step teacher recommendation. We also received some feedback on the change of the assistant principal to dean. And we've received a fair amount of feedback as well on the AP recommendation at the high school. So the process from here, we've asked the superintendent to take all of this feedback into account and to come back at our March 18th meeting and provide us with some recommendations, either to move forward or to make changes in those recommendations. So we expect that discussion to occur on the 18th. Margaret? Sure.
My name is Margaret DeBahart. I live at 18 Stanton Road in Milton. So this is my question. So you proposed an advancement budget that's $500,000, is that correct? Okay. And the cuts that you're proposing are in the same amount. So I'm not asking you to answer this, I'm just putting this out there to think about. So I understand the need for advancement, that the achievement gaps and, you know, no one supports STEM in science more than I do. But what I'm taking away from this presentation is that you're cutting current programs to make advancement programs, right? Without really understanding the impact that those cuts are going to have on achievement and advancement. So it's apples and apples or oranges. I'm, I'm a little confused. It's the same amount of money to make advancement by cutting current programs, teams at the middle school, a language teacher at the high school, art and music at the elementary school. Like those are important overall, whole child educational purposes. So I understand, like I'd like, you like to advance things and move your system forward. I'm all for that, but at the expense of current teachers, current programs and things that are valuable now, I have a question about that. And I'd like to have some feedback in the future about that trade-off. And that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No.
Can I add art to that list?
Yes.
Thank you.
So we will close the open budget hearing and move to our regular school committee meeting. On the, tonight's agenda, a few changes. Under chairman's report, I'd like to add fiscal 16 budget update. Some of, some of that you've heard already, but I have a few more things to say about that. We're going to move health and wellness up to report out right after the chairman's report. And I'm going to add an executive session item related to Ask Me Collective Bargaining Strategy. Ms. Kelly?
Would there be a way of doing the health and wellness right after this Cunningham side council? I know it sort of would interrupt the superintendent's report, but if there are members who are involved with that, it might just make it easier on them.
Sure.
I didn't tell her to say that, but Mr. Greenow is there. We, you know, so if we could, that would be great.
Okay, I think we've taken care of citizen speak, so superintendent's report?
I'd like to, oh, first, would you like me to respond to citizen speak? A call up the Cunningham first.
Let's do the response to citizen speak.
The, at the school committee, the last school committee meeting, two Glover parents from the Glover second grade, Ms. Kristin Brennick and Mr. Christopher Heavy, spoke to the integration in, of the stepchildren, students into the second grade, questioning the level of challenge and support. They were very articulate in voicing their concerns. And so I want to read a statement that I've put in the school committee packets, my follow-up to their comments and to communications, conversations and meetings I've had with the parents from that classroom. I met with Glover's second grade parent, Ms. Christine Brennick, Milton's director of pupil personnel, Karen Klasby, and principal Sheila Cuxtis on Thursday, February 20th to discuss the issues that Ms. Brennick had raised. First, I want the parents in watching and reading about this meeting to know that it is our regular practice of analyzing achievement in all of our elementary classrooms across the district. Over the years, we've developed an assessment and analysis, analysis Over the years, we've developed an assessment and analysis, analysis protocol in this district that works. As part of this protocol, I personally meet at the end of each quarter with, uh, the principals, uh, Ms., assistant superintendent Sheen and I, and previously assistant superintendent Phelan and I, meet with the principals in each of the schools and the coordinators, and we go over the internal language arts and math assessments. We actually analyze the assessments down to individual students. These assessments given at regular intervals through the school year provide the classroom teachers and the school personnel with information needed to effectively meet the needs of all learners. It also ensures that students are on track with grade-level assessments. We look at both the achievement and growth for every student, as I just said. Having met with the Glover team at the end of both the first and second quarter, I am confident that the classrooms at the Glover, particularly this classroom in question, are showing similar growth and achievement compared to other classrooms across the district. We will continue to use these internal assessments to monitor, monitor student progress and needs in the classroom in every one of our classrooms across the district. We do this, um, at the elementary level and we do it in a different format at the middle and high school, but again, looking at all the assessments. At these quarterly meetings with coordinators and principals in each school, we use teacher input in these assessments to determine how to best deploy the existing personnel, uh, reading teachers and other support staff within the district. So, when we're looking at the internal assessments at the end of each quarter, I'll give you an example. We use our existing reading teachers that we have hired through the advancement initiative and often the internal groups in grades 1 and 2, based on the internal assessments, the, uh, who, uh, the students who are in these support groups are changed. Again, we look every quarter at the student data and we redeploy our existing personnel. It is our regular practice to examine the best ways to utilize our staff to ensure that we both effectively and efficiently meeting the needs of all of our students. We have been able to utilize one of the step teachers at the Glover to push into the existing classroom in question on a daily basis to allow increased opportunities for targeted small group instruction in language arts and math. Uh, Dr. Sheila Cuxtis has sent a letter, and again, I want to acknowledge that, um, uh, again, through the dialogue with the parents that they hadn't been communicated with, but now they have all been communicated with, that the step teacher first was going into the classroom during Readers/Writeers Workshop. The Readers/Writeers Workshop really lent itself to, uh, an additional certified teacher in the classroom. Um, then the teacher in the classroom, Ms. Turner, asked if the step classroom teacher could move into the classroom during math activities. And so, both of these identified times during the classroom, five, during the classroom instruction, uh, five times a day, five times a week, um, five days a week, uh, the step teacher goes in during Readers/Writeers Workshop and Math. So, that's twice during each day a certified teacher is in that classroom. The district is committed to identifying and allocating resources to meet the needs of each and every student, um, in the district. If any parent or guardian is concerned with their child's educational progress, to the point, um, again, for some it's remediation, but to Mr. Heavy spoke very eloquently about challenge, we're committed to working directly with the parents and guardians to address their child's individual needs. Additionally, I have directed, uh, Ms. Turner and Dr. Cuxtis, uh, to send a letter out to all the parents in that 2nd grade, offering them, um, Ms. Turner agreed to two evenings, um, this week, any before-school, after-school, uh, working around parents' con, parent, uh, schedules to meet with individual parents, to talk about their concerns, uh, how their children's instructional program was being impacted, so one-to-one to meet with the teacher and the principal. Parent-teacher conferences are just around the corner, but we have offered this, um, now so that any parent could come in and sit down with the principal and teacher and go over their child's achievement in an instructional program during the day. During my meeting on February 20th with Ms. Brennec, it was suggested by Ms. Brennec that Ms. Klasby and I meet with the parents in the 2nd grade. When we went back to the leadership team and we began to plan what that meeting would look like, I said if the parents in that 2nd grade have questions around special education services, the parents in all of the schools have questions. So, uh, working with the PTO presidents last, uh, this last week, I've asked each of them to give me an evening date in March or April, and Ms. Klasby and I will do an overview of the district's special education programs and then take questions, uh, from the parents and guardians in the audience, uh, follow-up questions around the programs in the district, other programs particular to that school. So, Ms. Klasby and I will be going out to each of our six schools and presenting. I've directed assistant superintendent for curriculum and personnel Janet Sheen to, uh, go into the Glover 2nd grades and to do observations, and Dr. Sheila Cuxtis does daily observations in all of the classrooms at the Glover. She will continue those observations. I've met with Dr. Cuxtis, Ms. Sheen and Ms. Turner on several occasions, and we're going to continue to monitor the progress of the students in that classroom. And I believe that the steps meeting, again, the meetings with parents is, are integral. They're integral for any parent in the district to meet with the classroom teacher, the principal as needed, the curriculum, uh, support in the district, reassigning the step-certified teacher, and, uh, Dr. Cuxtis and Ms. Turner, um, putting out the conferences in advance of the parent-teacher conferences. And I want to, again, reiterate that when we went over the internal assessments in language arts and in math, uh, the growth and the achievement in that classroom, uh, was equal to the, uh, again, the growth and the achievement in all of the 2nd grades across, uh, the town of Milton. We have that internal data, uh, right down to individual students' data, and when parents make, uh, appointments in these upcoming conferences, uh, again, one of our most talented veteran teachers said that these internal assessments have really equipped the classroom teachers with a tremendous amount of data that they can discuss with parents when parents, uh, again, make appointments anytime during the school year or during parent-teacher conferences. So, uh, that statement is in your packet and, uh, we can post that tomorrow.
Can I just ask a favor? Ms. Gorman, could you let, could you let Ms. Turner know how much we all appreciate the extra work she's put in, the night meetings, the individual meetings, um, and let her know?
I will. I will. Ms. Bagley-Jones. Um, next, I'd like to invite to the table the Cunningham Site Council, uh, Mr. Redden.
They left.
And students, parents and teachers. Glenn, would you show them how to bring the chairs up? Um, Dr. Pellicek is going to help you, uh, bring the chairs up so everyone can join us right up here at the audience.
It's, um...
It should be good.
Yeah, it should.
We have, um, one of those kids going out to our office and give me some water.
It's okay. We don't mind. We can see over you.
Yeah, and you need to be able to see up there, so it's okay.
Principal Redden, I'm going to ask you to make introductions of your Cunningham team, some of whom are in the audience.
Which ones do you mean?
I recognize those T-shirts. Is it hot in here or is it...
All right, good evening. Thank you for your patience while we set that up. Um, start the speaker cord. So, I'm, I'm happy to be here, joined with my site council, at least most of my site council. We did have, um, a string of, um, illness that went through, and we're missing a teacher here, um, Ms. Atwood, who I'll introduce first. Our 4th grade teacher has agreed to take on some additional, um, points that we're going to cover today. Um, we have, um, Ms. Graham. We have Ms. Mulligan, our kindergarten teacher. We have Ms. Gordon, our Spanish teacher. We have, um, Mrs. Clancy, who's another parent representative. We have, um, Mrs. O'Keefe, who is a parent representative at the Cunningham School. And again, missing is, um, Ms. Young, who is our 2nd grade teacher, but this is her second year on, um, this site council, so she will definitely be missed today. But she put a lot of work into this presentation that we're about to share with you today. And, um, without further ado, we're going to go over the agenda and speak about the Cunningham, Cunningham School.
So, uh, to go over tonight's agenda, uh, to outline, we're going to begin with, uh, the Cunningham Experience, uh, followed by an overview of the work of our school site council, uh, the 2014 Accountability and MCAS Data, uh, the Data-Driven Goals, the School Improvement Plan, and embracing the Experience as Special Highlight.
So, when we put this video together, we really wanted to think about how we can try to encapsure a lot of the great things that are happening here at Cunningham, both academically, um, both, um, some of their enrichment programs and both some of the things that are especially unique to Cunningham School. And that was very, very difficult, and we were editing this video all the way up till today, trying to make sure we didn't miss or didn't miss too much, and it's, again, almost impossible, but this song and the, um, video really highlights sort of, you know, great things that are happening at Cunningham. Students are very happy when they come. You'll hear from students later speak about some of their experience at the Cunningham School, so we hope you enjoy.
That is a hard act to follow, but I'll try. Um, we meet as a site council the first Wednesday of every month. But we also, can I, can you hear me? We also, um, communicate frequently through emails, Google, and when we see each other in the buildings. Um, we focus on data. We focus on the MCAS results and analyze the MCAS results as well as internal assessments. We also like to focus on sustainable programs such as Saturday School and Extended School. One of the things that we've worked on, backup?
One of the things that we've worked on is, um, creating a program where the French and English in the 1st grade have specials together as well as lunch together to kind of start a unification of the programs right off the bat. Um, we also communicate frequently and share ideas. We're, we're a great group.
We had some discussion about whether we want to talk about how we communicate using Google and Google Drive and how, where our, our comfort levels are, but that has really been helpful in not only developing this video and this presentation by being able to work with each other despite this, um, amount of school days that we've missed and our meetings have been canceled as a result, but we were able to communicate, submit photos, submit, um, sort of, um, slides that we wanted to make sure were represented and highlighted today. So, we are definitely, um, on our hangouts and trying to get the video conference going. So, now we're going to, um, get into the data. So, we're looking at the accountability data from, um, 2014 for the Cunningham Elementary School, and, um, I want to speak to the first bar at the top. I always forget that I don't have the luxury of using a pointer because I want to make sure my model is facing you, but, um, we want, we are in the highest performing percentile, 81st percentile, but we also want to look at the bars that we didn't make, um, the 75%, which are the two, sorry, high needs and, uh, students with disabilities, which, again, I, I planned this out so we use the pointers, but we know where the work is. We know that students with high needs, I mean, students in the high needs subgroup and students with disabilities are where we need to make sure they're making growth, making progress from year to year annually on state assessments. Um, we are going to spend the majority of this presentation speaking to our plans to make sure that that's taking place, and we're also going to speak to how using data and internal assessments is helping us sort of make sure that they're making progress during the year so that, um, on the state assessments, which this year will be Park and, um, Inclass for Science, but on the state assessments, we have a nice understanding or better understanding of, um, sort of expecting student, not only better performance, but better progress and Behind me is a, um, pie graph of the overall Cunningham School. We had 69 students in, yeah, 69% of students in ELA in the advanced and proficient category. We had 39, I mean, 31% in, uh, needs improvements and warning. We had 79% of students in the advanced and proficient category for math and 21% in needs improvement and warning. So, obviously, not only is there a discrepancy between the ELA and the math that we definitely need to adjust, we want to make sure that we're, um, highlighting the need, the needs improvement and warning and making sure that the students that are in that category have been identified and that we're putting things in place, whether it's things we're doing in the school structurally with the schedule or whether it's things we're doing, um, beyond the school day to make sure that they have access to different opportunities to, um, make growth and progress, not only on state assessments, but during the year. So, and then the next few sides are going to break it down by grade level. So, in 3rd grade, we had 72% of students, um, in advanced and proficient in ELA. And if you look at the math, one of the big highlights is you can see over... And if you look at the math, one of the big highlights is you can see over half of our students in math were actually in the advanced category, so something that's really encouraging as we look at our current fourth grade and moving up. This is also our smallest class, we only had forty-seven students actually take the MCAS last year. I think that number has actually decreased this year, but we have a very small fourth grade class this year, but we're very encouraged by sort of their initial first state tests. And we want to make sure that we continue this growth with this current fourth grade class. And you'll see why I'm emphasizing fourth grade with the next slide. So as you can see, our needs improvement and warning increased in fourth grade significantly, not only just by looking at the pie graph, but from the previous year, from 2013, we saw a dip in performance in fourth grade. And again, one of our school improvement goals as a result is specifically speaking to what we're doing with fourth grade, what we're doing around instruction in fourth grade, and particularly what we're doing in writing that is unique to fourth grade this year to address sort of the practices and sort of the performance from last year. So we're very aware, this is something that was intentionally shared with staff on the very first day. This is something that's been intentional every single week, which I'll get into a little later. And this is sort of our number one goal this year, because we don't want to see any dips ever, but we definitely don't want to see such a high percentage of students falling into the needs improvement category. For our fifth grade data, we have eighty-two percent of students in proficient and advanced, and we are still looking at nineteen percent of students in our needs improvement and warning category. And we want to, although typically we do see a jump in fifth grade data, and we're expecting the same or even better this year, we do want to highlight that in fifth grade, they've had the test already twice, and we need to make sure that the number in needs improvement and warning is minimal at best, because they've already experienced the test twice, and we have already put things in place for them to sort of make growth and progress. And we want to make sure now that we're looking at instructional practices that will be addressed now, I know in science, in ELA with the new Colkins units, and in math, we're really making sure that we have extended day programs that focus specifically on areas that everyday math may not necessarily address to make sure that students are making progress in that area. Everyday math is a great curriculum and a great program, but sometimes that we need a sort of, not only extended time, but a different approach to making sure that students are learning specific content. In science, we had a sixty percent in advanced and proficient, but we had forty percent students in needs improvement and warning. This is another one of our improvement goals, this is our number four goal. This year, we're doing a lot of work in science, although it's only taken in fifth grade, this is a goal of the whole school, because there are students who are tested on standards from first grade to fifth grade, so it's going to be a complete effort to make sure that when we implement these new curriculum units, we're doing it with fidelity, and we're tracking growth like we would do in ELA in math. So assessments in science is relatively new this year, the curriculum is relatively new on top of the ELA and the workshop that we already placed on teachers, so the teachers have been very resilient in learning all the different new content, new curriculum, and working with the instructors that has come from the companies that we will also speak to, and has really made a difference in not only their approach in the classroom, but with the data. And again, everything I'm speaking to when I say effective is based on the data and from the internal assessments that we're using this year in Cunningham School. As you can see from in the picture there, I spoke briefly on the science PD that was fourth graders, third, fourth, and fifth grade teachers went through this year. And I'm going to have Erin speak specifically to how that has impacted her in the classroom, based on what she did there, and then what she were able to instruct in the classroom.
I found these FOS trainings to be especially helpful, because the FOS instructor provided us with creative ways to help students reach their learning objectives with a more discovery-based approach. She also emphasized science notebooking and taught us how to implement that in the classroom, which has really helped the students share their thinking with each other and with us, which in turn helps me assess their understanding of the investigations.
These are the generalized data observations. The percent of students that are advanced and proficient in grades three and five, I'm sorry, I need my glasses, and five ELA remains steady. The percent of students advanced and proficient has declined in grade four English Language Arts. Grade three math has shown a steady increase since 2012. Grade five math and science have shown a slight decrease.
So along with the performance, we also looked at their growth and noticed that some students in the proficient range showed low growth, and some students in the needs improvement range really showed significant growth. So as a team, we saw a need to focus on having all students reach a growth percentage of between forty and sixty percent as a minimum. So us teachers are currently working with administration to improve those low scores. That's also my grade level team's goal for our new evaluation tool.
So Erin just spoke briefly on student growth. So again, I just shared with you the performance, so how many students fell in advance, how many fell in percentage, the percentage of them that fell in proficient. However, all of those students, regardless of their performance level, needed to make growth during the year, and that is a huge part of our accountability, and that is something that teachers, they had, I shared in detail and depth sort of what that looks like in August, and that's something we speak to when we look at these internal assessments, and what we talk about when we talk about expectations on the state assessment. So we are all aware of the new Park assessment and sort of the technology component that's involved with that. However, all their scores will be normed against the students that perform the same way in MCAS, so they will get growth data, and that is something that we will look at, and that is, as Erin spoke to, the goals for definitely our fourth grade team, but also our fifth grade team, and currently our third grade team. So every teacher, every team has goals on performance growth for all students, and that is also the goals of myself and our curriculum coordinator, because we want to make sure that performance and numbers are looked at a little differently. We want to make sure that they understand that every single student, regardless of where they place, are making growth. And I put some growth data here to talk about the median growth for students that are in subgroups, I'm just going to read that to you. So the median student growth percentile for all students was fifty-two percent for the whole school, thirty-four and a half percent for students with disabilities, and fifty-five and a half for non-disabled students. So there's a proficiency gap that we need to address. Median student growth percentile for students in the high needs subgroup was thirty-six percent, and fifty-eight percent for students in the non-high needs subgroup. And then we had to look at the open response, because the open response involves writing, but it also sort of shows where we really need to look at instruction, what we're doing to address some of the concerns that we have with the open responses. In third grade, you can see that the average open response score was two point four three, but that's out of three. So that's compared to the other two grades I'm about to share with you, that's actually okay. We're looking at one point nine four out of four in fourth grade. That's an average out of four, and that is a concern. And that goes with writing, but it also goes with sort of taking evidence from the text, which Erin will speak to later, and how we address that in one of our curriculum, not curriculum, team meetings with the fourth grade team. And we want to make sure that it's also clear that although ten open response questions weren't answers, it's been ten students didn't actually get to the last open response, and it was the same open response they didn't get to, that's still a very low average considering, and we want to make sure that that does not happen again this year, because that has an overall impact on their scores. And then two point three nine out of four for the fifth grade. So a little bit better, but still very concerning, considering how much focus we're going to be, we've placed on writing in the past, so this year's assessments are even more crucial. So I've spoken a lot about some of the internal assessments, I'm just going to list them for you. We have Dantus de Penel, we have their French GB+, Scholastic Reading Inventory, we have the Everyday Math Assessments, we have the I-Rate Common Core, and we have the Teacher Strategies Goal. These assessments are critical for the work that needs to be done here at Cunningham School. The Dantus de Penel reading assessments, for example, involves a teacher sitting one-on-one with the student and reading with the student, and identifying not only sort of their reading level, but also taking data on next steps for the students so that they can make progress. This data, regardless of if it's done by our reading support specialist, by the classroom teacher, is documented. So whether it's in words, whether it's by level, it's all documented on a spreadsheet that you see sort of similar to the one I presented there. And the students, from the moment they take it in September, all the way to June, they're going to be sort of, not sort of, they're going to, their progress is going to be represented and reflected on this. I heard earlier, Mrs. Graham, they actually speak to some of the data meetings that we have at this Cunningham School. These are the data spreadsheets that we do share, we do color code them to make an easier visual, but we look specifically at the numbers, and not just of students sort of under grade, not at benchmark, but we also make sure that all students are making progress. And the big question is, if they are not making progress, what are we doing? What are we doing at the Cunningham School to address it?
So our data-driven process involves grade level teams and administrative teams meeting with a focus on data analysis, collaboration around instructional strategies that will solve and address problems in practice, assessing student growth, and developing safety nets that are intentional to address specific content. And I wanted to tell you a little bit about what that looks like. For example, last week, the fourth grade writing teachers met with the curriculum coordinator, and we shared samples from this month's writing assessment, and looked at all of those samples to discuss student progress towards our goal of having them effectively use evidence in response to text, which addresses those open responses. And based on the work, we decided that the next steps for us as a team would be to continue to model the use of evidence and create strategy groups to work on the students' specific needs, and we do that every month.
Jessica, yep, so they do the assessments, which is unique to fourth grade this year. So every month, they meet weekly. So the fourth grade team meets weekly with the curriculum coordinators, sometimes myself, specifically to talk about next steps and data from writing, but also from other, from reading as well. So this is the curriculum coordinator for ELA in math, Amy Gill. That meeting takes place weekly, the assessment takes place monthly. So our next steps as a school, so we're going to build a data inventory that tracks the progress from kindergarten. That is already in existence, we're putting them all together on a spreadsheet that allows teachers to access it from anywhere and plug in the data as they give the assessments, but it also allows them to plug in observational data, so there's columns for teachers to take notes and make comments. And the goal is that as the students move up, all this data is going with them, and all these teachers will be informed prior, so that when they get their class lists, all this data and information will already be at their disposal. So currently, grade levels can see all the data from the entire grade. Moving forward, we're going to really try to open it up so that teachers can see as students coming to them and students that have left them. But currently, for, as we're learning, to sort of work with this bigger data inventory, we're doing it by grade level. We have protocols for measuring student progress, so the conversations now when we meet with teachers is if it was effective, you know, how did it play out in the classroom? If we're saying that something went well, show us evidence of that. Identifying determining problems of practice and evidence of effective practice rooted in data. So when I mention problems of practice, I'm not saying necessarily bad instruction, but not effective instruction, and that's based on if a student has learned the content at the end of a unit, we look at how that unit was taught, we look at different ways we could teach that unit, or if you look at it a different way, if a class did particularly well, so I'm thinking of an average, a class that just averaged ninety-five on a math unit, and I want to know, how did that teacher teach that unit? What practices can I share with the rest of the teachers? Because obviously, the performance in this class was very high, and I would want that across the board in all the classrooms. Action plans for students assessing the effectiveness of the impact of the differentiated strategies. This is something we put in place last year, where students that are not making progress, we have individualized action plans for them, and a lot of them involve participating in safety net programs that we'll speak to later, but some of it, as you heard Mrs. Atwood speak to, involves some of the structural things we can do with the schedule, so that we could do some strategy groups within the classroom with the current staff that we have during the school day, which is also very important to make sure that we're meeting students where they at, where they are, and helping them make progress.
Initiatives funded by advancement include extended day support groups, increased knowledge of Common Core state standards, purchase of Common Core-aligned curriculum materials such as Colkins Units of Study for Readers and Writers Workshop, professional development focused on unpacking standards, increased time on task in all classrooms, grade level facilitators, supported analysis of math data to inform instruction utilizing specific data-driven protocols, opportunity to develop teacher leaders, targeted literacy support, Saturdays professional development sessions to develop familiarity with new literacy materials, reading specialist, early literacy consultant to work with grades one through three, science curriculum materials, FOS, which are the hands-on science kits, Creative Computing Program, English Innovation Pathway, and Professional Development.
And before we move on, I just want to speak to, again, all these advancements. Initiatives are great in the extended day. The first one I put up there is something that we're looking at in the same way we would look at things in the classroom. So all the students that participated in the extended day took an assessment when they started, and we're making sure that all the lessons that they are experiencing with their, most of the time their classroom teacher, but at times with other teachers in the building, that all the lessons are very intentional. So we have a completely different curriculum that we're using for extended day that, again, was intentional based on the pre-assessment that they took, whether it was in math or ELA. And they're going to take another assessment when extended day is over, and we're going to see if growth, did they make progress? And if they did, we're going to make sure we share those practices and make sure that we use that as evidence that this different approach, so again, they're covering the same content that they would be covering in the classroom, but this different approach may be deemed effective and may be a way that teachers can differentiate in the classroom. So all this, so this extended day program is so essential, because it's another source of data and evidence for us.
Okay, so next, we're going to outline the data-driven goal-setting focus areas, the full implementation of the new science curriculum with the addition of the new Common Unit Assessments, and the advancement initiative is Advancing Science and STEM. And we thank you for supporting these advancements. Increase and/or modify target support for students, especially students in high-needs group. Advancement initiative was closing the proficiency gap. Enhance the structure for ongoing assessment. Advancement initiative, closing the proficiency gap. Increasing achievement in all areas with special attention to students in the low-income subgroup. Advancement initiative, closing the proficiency gap. And move students into advanced categories in ELA, math, and science. Advancement initiatives, advancing science and STEM, and closing the proficiency gap. And again, we appreciate your support of these advancements.
So this involves more than just performance data. One thing that I do is keep a spreadsheet that I share with my team, Principal Redden and the curriculum coordinator, and some columns on that spreadsheet to give you an idea of what that looks like. In addition to performance data, as previous performance data from in addition to performance data, as previous performance data from state testing, high-needs, whether they participate in some of the safety nets mentioned. And we use that data to really focus on developing action plans and next steps for the students to improve their growth.
Which brings us right to our first school improvement goal, which I have addressed. Cunningham staff will work to increase proficiency in ELA with an increased focus on writing for grade 4 students by implementing monthly assessments and meeting weekly as a team. Again, this is unique to 4th grade, really addressing the performance scores and the growth data from the previous MCAS, but also knowing that there's a concern for how writing, how students are performing in writing, and there's a concern about how writing is being taught. We wanna make sure we're doing intentional things in the classrooms. And some of the strategies we have are fully implemented, integrated ELA curriculum aligned to current standards. So this is, again, a different curriculum that we're using in conjunction with the Colquins thing that all of the grade levels are doing from 3, 4, and 5, to really help put that extra emphasis on writing. Again, we're measuring that based on the monthly assessments that they're doing and making sure that students are making progress. Provide continuous support to grade 4 ELA teachers. Implement a common writing assessment and increase the presence of technology. So, again, that also addresses that, the way students are gonna be held accountable or need to show their, writing is gonna be typing this year on the PARC assessment. So we want to make sure that with the support of the MFE, with the support of the, from the budget, from the school budget, and from our generous PTO parents, we were able to get additional Chromebooks this year. And the 4th grades and 5th grades, at any given time in the day, are almost one-to-one with Chromebooks, so that they can use them in their lessons, they don't have to look for them. And I think that's very important, as we teach students to transfer their knowledge and skills, and not sort of lose anything when they start typing their thoughts. Our second literacy goal is to provide appropriate targeted interventions and instructional practices early and often to increase reading proficiency in all grades. We work towards every student reading proficiently by grade 3. Fully implement Reader's Workshop. Provide intervention groups throughout the day. Provide appropriate literacy materials for a range of learners and increase technology as a resource for reading materials. I think the biggest improvement, so Reader's Workshop, as you know, is this second-year working, training teachers in Reader's Workshop. I think the big thing for Reader's Workshop to work is to make sure students have access to books at their level, and that increases the ability for them to take a mini lesson, learn a specific skill, and be able to apply it to a book at their level. So by having funds and donations and the PTO support our new book room that is almost complete, but they were able to also use the funds made from the Scholastic Book Fair and put it all towards the completion of the book room. So we look forward to working with our curriculum coordinator and our reading specialist to get that done in the near future. And sort of increase the number of books in the classroom libraries, because that's where, you know, the students have the direct access to the books at their level in different genres, and will feel comfortable applying some of the skills that they learned in the mini lesson to their grade-level appropriate books, while the teachers can work on pushing them with books that may be just a little bit above their level in small guided reading groups. Our goal 3, support and develop the whole child. Working with staff and parents and students, Cunningham will work to provide instruction, interventions, and programming to support academic, social, and emotional growth and understanding of differences. This is a very important goal that encompasses so much, and it's meant to be that way. I'm gonna have the parents speak to this after we read the strategies and just the different things that we do at Cunningham to strengthen the school and also sustain some of the things that you could see that were shared with the other elementary schools, but we have some programs that we're gonna share tonight that are unique to Cunningham, that we're very proud of, that are really making a difference. That involves the work with parents, that involves the work with teachers. And I really think that after hearing the presentation from the parents, you'll see how much of an impact this already has this year. Teachers will collaborate and share resources electronically so that support staff are better prepared to support students in the classroom. I shared last year that we're piloting the online plan book. Well, this year, instead of having teachers share a plan book, they each have their own plan book, which, and they, which I believe has sort of ticked a little more of that anxiety off, because now they know that that's their plan book, and they can share the pieces of it that they think will be most beneficial for the support staff or for myself to know and make sure that their schedule's up to date. And it's another sort of piece of evidence, so that I can sort of make sure that they're, or so that everyone can make sure that they're covering sort of the specific content areas as like writing for 4th grade, and using those materials that were shared in team meetings and in groups. Staff will work to include all students and families in school communications and events. Most staff do this individually, but some staff are teaming up to write more newsletters home to parents and share communications, because with this extra work and this collaborative work with teams, you'll notice that a lot of the, the teachers are pretty much following the same, teaching the same content at the same time, which is very, which is very good when you're talking about working together collaboratively, making sure that we're actually covering the same content at the same time. A teacher's not on lesson 1, we're another teacher on lesson 8. And these newsletters are really helping to control the pace. In order to continue to build strong school relationships, the Cunningham will extend the day for interested students that speaks specifically to our Saturday Scholars Program, which I think is pretty much, almost the highlight this year, because we did extend a day last year, we weren't able to do Saturday Scholars last year. But this year, with joining with Colley-Cott School, we were able to bring that back, and we have good enrollment, we have opportunities for them to continue to do art and to continue to work in the gym. But also, we removed that whole, the test prep piece of it, and really focused on doing some enriching activities in the classroom that students are doing fun activities in the classroom while learning ELA and math. And that was the emphasis that we worked on with the teachers, and we looked at a completely different curriculum that catered to that, and I think it's working out really well. And even though there's only a few more Saturdays left, we still have people that wanna sign up, which just goes to show the word's getting out there and that people are really interested in coming on a Saturday. And straighten and work with the diversity and cultural committees, PTO, and the site council.
So I have kind of a, I have kind of a fun thing to share with you. Obviously, we know a lot of the schools have similar programs and similar things that they do, but we want to share one thing that Cunningham is doing, that, a new program we have. The program is called RAD, Reading About Diversity. And it was developed by two parents last summer, and it runs in grades 1 through 4. It's five books per grade level, and it's run similar to Meet the Artist. Parents come in, just like they do for Meet the Artist, they sign up and they sometimes work with us as a team, or single parents come in and do the program. The basic goal of the program is to promote a discussion, an ongoing discussion in the classroom about diversity, but really, all kinds of diversity. I, you know, sometimes we think of just racial diversity. These parents decided to focus on race, religion, physical abilities, intellectual capabilities, gender. The list goes on and on. It's really a diverse program about diversity. We all know kids love books, they love being read to. So we start with an interesting story, the kids gather on the story rug usually. The parent reads the books, and it morphs right into a great conversation. It's parent-led, but definitely a kid-powered conversation about the topic at hand. We've had some really thoughtful discussions that have led to interesting conversations about differently-abled family members, friends and family who don't look like them, or attend a different church than their family does, neighbors who eat different food than they do, grandparents who've come from the US, come to the US from all over the world. I mean, really, the list goes on. Following the classroom discussion, the kids go back to their desks, and in small groups are on their own, usually work on a writing piece of it, where they may draw pictures, we have skin color crayons, so they may draw pictures of what we've just discussed in grades 2, 3, and 4. Some more writing is involved. And then we all gather back, and anybody who wants to share what they wrote about or drew about shares with the class, and the class sort of reacts to that. So it's really been the lessons sort of embrace diversity and celebrate diversity, but a broadly-defined diversity while further building community in the classroom and having parent volunteers, and on a more regular basis. So it's been very successful at Cunningham. The two parents who did it are Jen Manak and Tanya Frank McKnight. And we really wanna thank the PTO-funded RAD for them. But since then, the Milton Cultural Council has come through with a grant that has pretty much funded it, refunded the PTO. So Milton Cultural Council gets a big thank you, they paid for it, which is excellent, so. We'll collect the books at the end, but we want you guys to keep the, yeah, I know. We don't have that much money from the MCC. We want you guys to keep the curriculum sheet. Just take a look, it's interesting, the discussions. And it's, again, finishing its first year, and these parents have generously offered to share it with the other three elementary schools after they tweak it a little bit, and share it this summer, so that if they want to and can fund it, they can offer it in their own schools.
She's trying to steal the book. Let's just kinda borrow it for a little bit.
And I'm just gonna pick up on another really interesting thing that's happening. Tucker has done the community garden, but we're finally doing it this year. And I just, I wanna say that gardening is learning by doing, and it doesn't get any more hands-on than growing something, and nothing more science-based. It's a win-win with parent volunteers, it's all volunteer, and Bernadette Noonan's support, and the PTO, and the MFE. We're taking advantage of what's right in our front yard, which is that fenced-in area to the right of the school as you come out. And we're really excited about, this'll be our first year, we're doing it with first graders. And it would be enough that gardening has, just increases self-confidence, it teaches cause and effect, cooperation, creates a love of nature and healthy eating, it gets the moving, which we need. And it's proven to have a positive effect on social and interpersonal skills and self-esteem. And I think of it as creativity in action, and all of that would be enough. But it makes kids enjoy learning. So studies actually show that school gardens help motivate students to study science, and it boosts their scores on science achievement tests. So it's kind of a win-win there. And also, kids with learning disabilities do really well with it. It increases nonverbal communication skills, this stuff's been studied as well. They learn how to take advantage of making order, cooperative effort, and positive bonding relationships with peers, as well as with adults. Because we're bringing in moms and dads, and a lot of this is gonna be, we have some money, but we're also gonna really try and recruit some volunteers. So, and then it brings pride and accomplishment and connection to the school, of course. And it supports the whole child. And I think with the, you know, cuts in arts and music and that kind of stuff, this year is a really good way, just like Meet the Artist and RAD, you know, volunteer parents coming in and organizing how to, how to sort of make some of those other ends meet. Excited about it.
Thank you. Now, fourth school improvement goal. The Cunningham will work to increase proficiency in science by implementing new science curriculum units, implementing integrated science curriculum aligned to current standards, provide professional development in science curriculum implementation and effective practice, as Erin spoke to earlier. Develop common science assessments and writing prompts for notebooks. Increase the presence of technology at all grade levels in French and English. Implement the Creative Computing Program in grades 3, which started this year.
So this year's 5th graders are last year's 4th graders. So I wanna talk to them, about them in a different way, we've just heard a lot about their data. I wanna talk about inspiration and intelligence in the classroom. I spent a lot of time in the classroom recently, I'm a parent of Baron, who's gonna speak next. And I also teach painting at Boston University, I've been there for 15 years. So for me, I feel like I wear two hats when I go into the classroom. And right now, a third hat that I have on, I'm working with the 5th grade students to create a collaborative, a large collaborative art project. They're going to be making three banners that will be going in the front of the Cunningham School on the wall of the gym as part of the beautification project that's supported by the PTO and started by the PTO. It's a really wonderful way for the students to have pride in their school. But specifically, the banner project allows them to work with multiple kinds of intelligence. They're not only going to be making the pieces of the banner in their art class, so they each work individually and make these pieces in a multi-step process. It's going to take them about a month to do this, so they have to follow it through from start to finish. But they also be working collaboratively, we've already had group discussions, we've really just started because of all the snow. So we've already had these group discussions together, we take their work, we lay it out, and I say to them, what do you notice? And Mrs. Lathwell says to them, what do you notice? And for me, making art is like science, it's a process of noticing the world, especially for children, because they learn through kinesthetic and tactile experience. And we all can think back to our memories of lessons that we learned specifically through material and through what we saw. And so for me, it's such an honor to be working with the students in the classroom. We're working both in the art classroom, there are parent volunteers. Laura Kanata has been quite important to this project. She led a responsive kind of questionnaire for the students, what Cunningham means to me. So they really started by looking back at six years at this school and really thinking about what was so important to them, first of all. And Jessica Glulie, who's teaching art in Milton Schools, and myself and Laura are all also working with them in the classroom. The theme of the banners, they're gonna have to make them for us to see them. So what I put here is just a little kind of idea that I've shared with them about open books and open minds. So thinking about what they're learning through literacy and through the books that they've shared for many years as opening their minds into inspiration, into lifelong learning. So I have some images from the classrooms of the different quotes. I love the texture of the 5th grade classrooms, there are four classrooms. All of them have wonderful quotes. Mrs. Hyde is doing a kindness blog, where the students are blogging to each other and sharing kind acts that they do, so that their writing also involves their life and what's important to them. I almost cried reading it, it's so inspiring. In Mr. Coben's class, they are doing poetry and memorizing poetry. And so at home, Baron will be embarrassed, he'll be walking around saying a William Blake poem. And, you know, kind of thinking, when, I can't make this up, it's so wonderful. They share current events, in Mrs. Don Tremont's class, and just today at the bowling party for the 5th graders, I asked some students, Mr. Smith's class, what, you know, what are you working on specifically right now? And they love doing creative writing, where they get a sentence to start, and then they finish the sentence with their creative writing. So there's so much writing going on, but in all different ways. And I want the banner to reflect that, to reflect what's going on in the classroom. I don't see art-making as, I see it as special, but I don't see it as separate from learning that happens in the classroom. So the students will be using geometric shapes that they use to make a Polygon Town project, and they will be cutting out silhouettes of favorite book characters or imagery from poems that they read, and placing those over the silhouettes of the books. So there's a sense of kind of a culminating project for the 5th graders before they go to Pierce Middle School, and they're such a joy to work with. I get so much from going in and just hearing what they have to say and seeing what they have to do. So it's been a good six years.
Thank you. So we definitely wanted to share those highlights from the parents. And although the teachers and I definitely focus on making sure all students are making academic progress, the parents and the teachers bring this rich experience, this full Cunningham experience that we wanted to share with you today. And we want to end the night with you hearing specifically from students on what that experience has meant to them before they go off to Pierce Middle School. So if I can have Anna Hamlet and Baron Clancy come up.
They didn't plan their outfits, that's the best part. They just arrived in the same outfit.
You did, oh, oh.
They were blogging about it.
See, they did that, that's what they did.
Cunningham means a lot to me. It's where my first six years of school happened. I don't remember much before kindergarten, so Cunningham is where I... I don't remember much before kindergarten, so Cunningham is where I spent the first six years of my life. I met, I made most of, I made my first friends and learned to read and write and almost everything else I know about academics. I liked almost every day of school here. I can remember a lot of my time there from playing house in kindergarten to writing the long comp in fourth grade. My years at Cunningham have each been different. In my six years, I've had three different principals. The only thing that I remember about Ms. Gerber is making a card for her birthday in kindergarten. I got to color in the shoes. Dr. Spalding really got us interested in science. And I remember in third grade to welcome Mr. Redden, we all signed a basketball. One of my favorite subjects is math. I've done Math League, a program on Friday mornings since second grade. It has really helped me in continental math and word problems in general. This year, we've changed the curriculum a bit, and we're doing Math Olympiad problems. A week ago, when I had finished my work early, Mr. Coben said that I could work out one of the Olympiad books. I was really happy. One of my fondest memories is from third grade. We were doing a class play, and four main parts were picked out of a hat. Everyone else, including me, was chorus. I was a bit sad that I didn't have a main part, but it was okay. However, I was really glad when we performed a play in music class, and the teacher said that since I had some acting experience, I could direct it and make sure that everyone was doing the right thing. These are some of the opportunities that I've had at Cunningham. My name is Baron Clancy, and I also go to the Cunningham School. One highlight from Cunningham, especially in the fifth, well, only in the fifth grade, is how that they introduced the new FOS kits. I love the FOS science kits because they're really hands-on, and they're also really fun. Also, I feel there's so much more, so much topics covered, and it's really organized, and it's organized really well. So I feel I can learn science really well, which is my favorite subject. Also, I've, a fun part that they included is that they include, in the living systems unit that we're doing, when we were learning about the Earth system, they included this food web game where you got a deck of cards with your team, with the team that you're in, and then you got to create a food web with the deck of cards. I felt that that had a good collaboration experience and also taught you about science. I also found that watching a movie during the Earth Systems Unit and then answering questions was fun. It taught me so much about, I don't know, the Earth science. And then, finally, the, when we did our recycling, when we learned about recycling, we got to get, we got worms, and we got to create a habitat for them. And we get to check them, I don't know, about once a week, and I find it's really, it's pretty fun. Yep. So that's really about the FOS kits, and that's what I like about them, the FOS sciences.
I just want to say, I did not tell. This is what I want to write about, so.
Thank you, Baron and Anna. They are part of our fifth grade leadership team, and I'm happy to say that they're always willing to do anything for the Cunningham School. And they also were very instrumental in our bullying assembly, where they scripted in videos of a bullying situation that could take place in school. We were able to play it for the entire school and sort of speak on the next appropriate steps and actions that should have happened after. And I think Baron did cyberbullying, which was very unique and very, another conversation that we were able to go in with the entire school body present. So it was great for them to work on that and bring the bullying assembly in a different direction. So that is our Cunningham School Site Council presentation, and thank you.
If I can just quickly say, I have one quick question and three comments. The extended day program, is there any cost to that?
The extended day program, there is no cost. That is from advancement. And we, as a result, we do ask that the teachers identify the students that are invited. And we do use the data to, not just MCAS data, but we also use performance data during the school year. So like a mass notice doesn't go out and sign up, whereas SAD is scholars is. So there is a fee for SAD scholars, and we do, we do send that out to everyone and hope that not only will the students that are in extended day or that have been identified as extended day, other students go to sort of make rich groups.
Thank you. And then just three quick comments. I love the integration of the French and English program and the specials. And is that a new thing? And I'm really glad to hear that it's happening. It's been talked about for a number of years, so thank you. In the slideshow, no offense, I thought was the best part, other than these two young people, because it showed the whole child. And the data is really important and really good, you know, but the kids, seeing the kids and what they do and what the teachers do. And then the last point was with the two students that were highlighted on the written part, you'll show, you'll notice that the academic achievement is there, but so is the art achievement and the music achievement. Just want to get that in there. So thank you for those things. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ms. Padere?
I just always loved hearing about the Cunningham. There was always something exciting happening there. And this was, you know, I have to say, beyond, beyond what you've done before, really amazing things. And I have so much to say, but it's, I'll make it as brief as I can. First of all, the song was, Stephanie and I always have the same, same song. Like I do the same song for the Iron Chef Junior. I was like, that's my song. The French and English mixing, I would just say, if we could look at that for the other schools as well, because I know there's a big push for that, and a lot of the kids would really love it, really, to see their friends a little bit more that are in the different programs. But what I really want to highlight is that I feel like you guys are just doing such a great job at not just doing, okay, we need to do better in science and just more science, but looking at different ways creatively at enhancing the program and thinking creatively about getting kids inspired about the program and science. And I think also, you really did such a great job of talking about, there might be not an art section on the MCAS or PARC. There's no music section, but that doesn't mean that those don't enhance how kids do on those tests and how they do in school in general. It's really about kids being inspired and coming to school every day and what, you know, we don't talk to them enough about what makes you excited about coming to school? What part of the day do you enjoy the most? And how does that help them do better in everything? And so I think that, you know, we talked at the beginning of this meeting a lot about those programs seem to be unprotected, and they should be protected because they're just as important to students' learning. And your presentation really highlighted that. Of all facets of education, those are important just as much as anything else, because it's all about students' learning and their enhancement of that. You know, if kids are excited in one class, it generally bridges to the next. So I want to thank you for that, because I think it really, really tied into that part of the presentation earlier.
Thank you.
Jerry?
Sure. Thank you so much. That was just awesome. And I, I could talk for hours about it. I feel like I need to go and be brief with Jonathan about this whole thing, because it was so exciting. But thank you to all of you, because you all clearly have a role to play in the success of the school, and that's a very powerful thing. I could, I won't reiterate what these guys have already said, but I just have a couple of questions. And one is, you mentioned in one of the slides about an integrated ELA curriculum. Is that outside of the Read His Writers Workshop, or is, what exactly is that?
So I think you're speaking specifically to what the fourth grade team. We, they do do the Calkins units of study that the third, fourth, and fifth grades do. We added a separate piece specifically, not because we feel the Calkins unit is not sufficient at writing, but we wanted to really add more intentional writing lessons and instruction time dedicated to writing for the fourth grade because of our performance data on the MCAS, and because we don't want to see that set, that type of result again in the upcoming PARC assessments. And I think it's, you can't put another thing on the teacher without providing support, which is why the weekly support is also very important. We have Mrs. Gail, who's great at working with the teachers and sort of having them look at the data, but also look at the instruction and sort of thinking about different ways and, different ways to sort of make sure students are accessing the content that we want them to be able to represent in writing. So it's a level of support that's additional for the fourth grade, but also, yes, there's a little extra piece of the curriculum that is not done in third or fifth grade.
It's not a separate curriculum program. So that integration that you're talking about is so critical in, you know, having the weekly team meetings and the support from the outside people and building the capacity of your teachers is just, it's, it's all good news. So you kind of led into my next point, and that was, your focus is very much on writing, based on your data, obviously, as you said, which, I mean, your data was wonderful, so that, it wasn't, it wasn't terrible, but it's, you identified the need. So you're focusing a lot on the writing part, but we know that the PARC assessment assesses writing in a very different way than MCAS does. So can you just talk a little bit about that transition to the writing? I don't want to take a lot of time, because I know that could be a thesis paper, but...
So again, when we discuss, and again, I want to give credit to the fourth grade team that has agreed to give up their time to meet, because we don't have the common plan in time. These are teachers that agree to give up their time to meet with us every week, so I commend them for that. And when we planned it, we were focusing on sort of students not be able to, like Erin said, take evidence from the text and put it in writing, or sort of write a beginning, middle, and end, and sort of do those basic things that you need to do in writing to get, regardless of if you're typing it or if you're writing it, to get credit. I think that with the typing, you know, we all hear, you know, how many words a minute they need to be able to write and how that can take away from what's actually put down on paper. So I think that's why I included in that improvement goal, the Chromebook piece, because you can't say, okay, on computer lab, I mean, when we have time for the go-to computer lab, then we can practice that. They need to be able to practice embed that in everything they do, whether they're writing science journal notebooks, whether they're doing some over-response writing in, you know, math. We need to make sure that they have access to a Chromebook so that they can continue practicing those typing skills, because that's when they're going to learn how to type. We also have, or we're very close to putting them on all the Chromebooks, but we are looking at the Google typing programs that we can't, we don't really, we haven't identified a time in the day where we can do that, because there's, it's very packed. But we're trying to see if we can either lend them out so that they can go home and sort of practice it, sort of like they do with Study Island, because they do have to be on the Cunningham Google account to get it. But I think that it's definitely important, because if they, you know, aren't able to write as much because do the typing, they're not really being, there's not really a clear measure of what they're actually capable of doing. So we do really intentional about making sure they have to have that time to really practice and feel comfortable.
And I just want to close by saying, I love RAD. I love it. I might even borrow it. No. It's awesome. Thank you. Thank you to all of you.
Ms. Zulus?
So thank you as well. I too was impressed with the music in the presentation and jealous of your ability to integrate into your presentation. In each of your goals, you talked about technology, increasing technology, increasing in each of the four goals. And I was wondering if there's a resource component of that? Do you have what you need? Are you looking for more? Is there, is there a resource or funding component to the technology part in particular?
I think the recent purchases by the MFE, and I think the initial purchase by the district this year, has really put us in a really good place, not only for PARC, but just to make sure that, because again, we don't always want to walk into classrooms and students are glued to a computer screen either. We want to make sure that when it's needed and when it's best for the lesson that's being taught, the students have access to it. And I think now, I was able to put a lot more Chromebooks in the upper grades, which allowed me to put a lot more iPads in the lower grades, a lot more Kindles in the lower grades, which I think has created a nice balance in the Cunningham School that, you know, so when we're doing station work and workshop type things, there's always a grouper and a station where students are actually working with technology and having that experience. And teachers, as a result, are also getting more comfortable. I have teachers from both strands actually participating in Google. The Google trainings that are currently taking place, which is a really big step, because a lot of the apps and the things aren't translated necessarily in French. So you have to really think creatively about how that's going to help you in what you're doing in the classroom and not take away from the immersion piece of it. And I think the teachers are really being intentional and really thinking thoughtfully about how to make that work. So I was very encouraged, and I see that happening on both sides, and so it doesn't make a difference. Well, strangely, when the access to technology is there.
May I, before your next question, if you don't mind? I'd like to recognize that this time Jonathan Redden, from the day Jonathan Redden joined the Milton Public Schools, in a very professional and mild way, he has been our technology leader. And so he might have let others think that they were in charge of technology, making the decisions, heading up the committees. But I want to recognize Jonathan, and Jonathan, you do it in such a mild but strong way. He drives, he drove his school and then presented to the whole district an electronic plan book. His teachers across grade levels, the sped teachers, share the information. He shared with his peers across the district. Google is, I think, his middle name? Is it? Is it? And he and Ms. Sheehan have something going about Google. And so I want to recognize you. You are a leader on the leadership, you are the leader on the leadership team. And the way that you set the standard and drive people and expect it, and the ultimate gainers of your technology drive and love of technology are the students in the Milton Public Schools, all of the schools, but especially the Cunningham. So thank you.
Thank you.
So your question was very appropriate.
Oh, thank you.
And I, and if I might, and I promise this isn't my presentation, but Jonathan might be, it could come up here and sit with us. I want to recognize Leroy Walker and the Capitol Committee and the town. And Mr. Walker represents us and lobbies for the schools at the Capitol level. So without the Capitol expenditure, the MFE expenditure, the Milton Public School expenditure, and the Copeland expenditure, we would not be able to go into PARC this year. And it is the right decision. We work with a Milton Public School parent, who's a leader in the state, in PARC, and Dr. Laura O'Dwyer. She said PARC is here to stay. There's no MCAS II being planned. So our children would have been left behind and would have been one year behind. So our teachers and students, you would be proud of the work that's being done in the schools and the level of anticipation and their willingness. Again, you talk about resiliency and risk takers. They're ready to take the PARC. But without that initiative of technology, I sit with superintendents from across the state, and their towns, communities, and school committees have left them unprepared. And so to the Milton Public Schools and the town of Milton, they should be proud that our schools are prepared for this next level of testing. Thank you. You lead, you did the leading question.
You're sure. You're sure. Just one other comment. On Frank's gardening initiative, there's a, there are a couple of parents in town, parents of Pierce students, Jerry and Janet Lorden, who have created the STEM Garden Institute, which is a whole curriculum based on agriculture and its effect on science, technology, engineering, math. So just a thought, you might, you might check, it's STEM Garden Institute, and you might get some ideas.
That's at Pierce?
No, no, they've developed a whole curriculum that they're putting in certain...
Nationally.
Nationally, they're putting in schools nationally.
Are they doing it here, though?
I think we have some pilots. I think we have some pilots.
If you don't mind. Sounds like a Blue Note. So the Lordens work really across the country. And they are, at the Tucker, they did an after-school, you might remember, at the elementary level. It was an option for all families to go to the Tucker, because their children went to the Tucker. Now they're at the Pierce School. And so we have one of their hydroponic...
Hydroponic, yeah.
Gardens in our office, but I will tie you up with them tomorrow. And in the off-season, when you're not gardening, you can put, you can take the one out of our office and have it at the Cunningham.
Will we ever go? The spring's going to be rough.
Yeah. And I have to tell you, Janet Lorden volunteers, and she'll do the sessions in the school. She'll set up, and she periodically comes to our office to check our progress.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Kelly?
Thank you very much for that wonderful presentation. And it really gave anybody who watched the entire thing an amazing example or feeling as to what goes on day in and day out at the Cunningham School. And it just brought back such memories, because my three guys went through that school. And it just is amazing. three guys went through that school. And it just is amazing, every time you guys come and present, you know, what happens day in and day out. So congratulations. And it can only happen with the dedication of the teachers that you have, the leadership, and the parents. And, you know, without all those parent volunteers coming in on their, you know, lunchtime or whatever to help out in the classroom, those kinds of experiences wouldn't be possible. So thank you very much. Two just quick questions. One is, I love the amount of data that you are collecting and the color coding, you know, I do that in my business, so I think it's fabulous. But how hard is it to maintain? How are you doing with that? Is it something that, there's a program out there that can assist, or, you know, what kinds of things are you looking at around that?
So I think the approach that we took was to help teachers to become comfortable with spreadsheets in Google. And the reason why is because they're used to submitting Excel sheets and emailing them back to myself and to the coordinator. And then the coordinator would have to take those Excel sheets from the different grade levels and put them all together on the document. And it was just a multiple steps. And by the way, I'm encouraged that we have a data specialist now that might even find a simpler way to do it. I'm not saying Google's the perfect way, but Google allows it to be more of a live process. So when Erin enters, where she enters her data, it goes into a spreadsheet that everyone has access to. So it's like live, sort of, way to sort of keep track of all the different spreadsheets. And so now we only need six of them for the grade levels, as opposed to each class having their own Excel sheet. So it's made it easier. It's also more important to make sure teachers are comfortable, because they can also go in and delete something by accident, because they didn't really know how to sort of put something in. So we started by sort of sitting down and doing it for them. And now as they've become more comfortable, they're able to do it on their own.
And then one more question. On the extended day, are there obstacles to having as many children as you would like joining those programs? And what are they? And do some of those students also, are they also participating in the Saturday Scholars Program?
So to your first question, we addressed, so the biggest obstacles are, can they come in in the morning as opposed to in the afternoon? And I, because I want to, to the best extent possible, have the classroom teacher be the teacher of the extended day program. If the teacher's schedules lend more to the morning, and the students can't get there that early in the morning, or the parent has two students and doesn't want to make two trips, and that, all of those are valid reasons, we have to look for another way to provide that opportunity. So we have teachers, we have Nicole Young, who wasn't able to join us today, we have our two lead teachers also filling in and providing extra times where students can, still in the same grade level and still in the same class sometimes, but have extended day learning opportunities in ELA or math. So it's not together, it's separate. So it's either ELA session or math session. And in that situation, they won't be with their classroom teacher, but they'll be with a very skilled teacher that's using the same curriculum that the rest of the extended day learning teachers are using. And they can quickly, because the groups, I think, have very small this year, they can very quickly get that rapport with the students and really get them excited about coming and learning. So, I mean, I've also sort of stepped in to make sure we had enough groups for our fifth grade students, because again, we're looking at growth from fourth grade now because of our data. So I definitely have really wanted to make sure every single fourth grader that was able to come, could come. And as a result, I wanted to make sure that I have provided some extra days, even if it's a Friday afternoon, which it is in this situation, because it's very important that we address the first school improvement goal, which is improving the scores of those students from last year.
And then to Mrs. Kelly's second part of that question, some of those students on Saturday mornings, was that your...
Oh, sorry.
Second part, Ms. Kelly?
The Saturday morning program, so at first, so the initial wave of Saturday morning program involved, I think, three of the students from extended day. And then we were able to, once it became level funded, once it became funded, we were able to invite other students for free. And then because the PTO backed it, we were able to invite a lot more students for free. So it was joint between the Cunningham College. So there was some conversations that had needed to happen first about, you know, the students that paid, where the money going to, and how we're going to work with Glenn to sort of get it all balanced. And then, once that took place and the PTOs agreed to support the program, we were able to offer it to every student, at least offer it to every single student in extended day, for free, if they weren't already signed up. And again, even with a few Saturdays left, people sending in checks to take advantage of even the last two days. Obviously, that's from the great work from Mrs. Fady, our gym teacher who's there, and Mrs. Lathwell, our art teacher who's there doing clay activities with the students. But also the great team of teachers that are making the learning fun. We were able to put two teachers in each of the classrooms. So every ELA and math class for the grade levels has two teachers teaching, which is something that I think really helps, benefits. That Saturday Scholars Program is something we definitely want to hopefully start earlier next year and really build from our success this year. Sorry if we're not getting to that question.
No, that's okay.
I think this is our last site council presentation. I'm pleased to tell you that the Oscar for Video of the Year goes to the Cunningham Site Council. This is, this is the type of presentation that we hope for. And what it demonstrates is that you've developed an incredibly cohesive team, that everybody is pulling in the same direction, everybody's working in the same direction, everyone's enthused about what they're doing, and that you've created a horizontal and a vertical integration that is pretty impressive. And what's most apparent is that it's clear that you see the full six-year experience at the Cunningham as a continuum. And that all along that continuum, you're, you have expectations. And I think the best advertisements are certainly Anna and Baron. But what that demonstrates is that you're creating well-rounded citizens of the world. And that's really what we're trying to do. So thank you, because this work can be challenging at times, it can be thankless at times, but clearly, your energy has prevailed here. So thank you, and congratulations on the Oscar. Thank you.
Stephanie, we'll pass our books to the end.
Take our books back.
We passed all those down.
Mike, could you grab them?
I'll put it back here.
Thank you.
What book is that? I want to see what book it is.
Do you have a list? The poetry lesson y'all have? I really appreciate the banner work.
You know, the spring, to just kind of critique each lesson a little bit.
Okay. A plus. Tomorrow, I'm going to hook together with you. Yeah.
None of the other schools do it right now?
Yes.
Are you going to share? Did you share it with the PTO president?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
It was A plus. A plus. You know, it might be tatty, but Rich Garino will spread the word to the entire high school about the elementary. I couldn't think of a better person to be here tonight to see the elementary presentation.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
We're going to wait for...
Are we going to wait? It's very fun being over on this side.
Different.
Me? My pleasure?
You go ahead.
Well, what are we going to do?
Go. Glenn's ready to go. If we want to wait for Leroy, or? Is Leroy's, Mary, can you see his Leroy's? Here he comes. While we're getting it up.
What's that? Yes, that's right.
Maybe I could just say while waiting that Ms. Shan, Ms. Shan, oh my God, I can't even think. A superintendent, oh my God, would someone introduce you to Sheen? Oh. And Ms. Dormley and Becky are also part of the Health and Wellness Committee. And this is an offshoot of the Health and Wellness Committee, that we finally got this project done after...
Took a while, but we're there.
Quite a little while. So...
So I'll have a little setup about the Health and Wellness. We have subcommittees of the school committee that I tell the school committee all the time, "Make us better." And so, remember, Bagley Jones initiated the Health and Wellness Committee. Once a month, district-wide, I'll say, of all the committees that I sit on, there are parents, there are citizens who don't have children in the district, there are health advocates, there are wellness advocates, there are adjustment counselors, principals. We have agendas that everybody's interest comes to the table. And out of this Wellness Committee, I'm not going to steal their thunder, Mr. Zulus, and Chairman Walker, you may want to do the lead-in. I was just establishing where this idea came from.
I learned early on, I never try to follow you, so why don't you keep going?
And so, Ms. Bagley Jones and Rich Garino, one of the initiatives of the Wellness Committee was to gather resources for families and parents and guardians. So this, they're going to give you the backdrop of it and explain it. But talking about making a difference, this is going to be the gift that keeps giving. And I can't tell you on behalf of the district, the expertise that the two of you tapped to create this, that's going to be on the Milton website for all to benefit from. I'm eternally grateful. So to you.
Thank you.
So as you guys know, when families and kids are struggling, the place they always look to is the school for guidance. If a family's running into a tough time, they look to the school. And I want to say it was about a year and a half ago, maybe longer, that John Fallon had the idea at Health and Wellness to say, "We should put together a resource guide. We should create a pamphlet, so something quick that we can just give to families." Kristin and I picked up that task. We said we were going to do it. And it turned into a much, much bigger project than we anticipated. But the outcome, I think, has been pretty outstanding. The best part about this for me is, rather than having to call a guidance counselor or a principal and kind of bare your soul with all your personal business, families can just go online, they can look something up, and just kind of find the supports that they need on their own time and in their own way. So I'll kick it over to you to...
And one of the things I think that really stood out when we started this a long time ago, it was right around when there were a lot of families in Milton that were losing their homes around the mortgage issues. And Rich was sharing with us how many needy families we were having, and families that hadn't expected to be so needy. And that's where some of the food and fuel assistance came from. Then we always have people asking us, both of us and other people, "How do I find a therapist for my kid?" You know, then it was substance abuse issues. We had, you know, prescription painkillers really expand in Milton, unfortunately. Became much more aware of heroin in all of the South Shore communities. So, and I'm not saying it's Milton, but it's in all of Massachusetts. It was an epidemic, is an epidemic. And so that was the other thing that really, we thought parents might need a place to look at things confidentially. So that's where this came from as well. So Glenn, if you want to put, so on the, and this was, so many people worked on this, I'm not even going to try to say all their names, but a lot of people worked on this. The Family Resource Click right up there is a brand-new little click thing, whatever you call it. And if you can click on that... Oh, we're up. Okay. So if you look at it, each section has specific tabs, just a little, yeah, scroll down a little, this is our little introduction, and then keep going, keep going. And now the things in blue, you can, if you click on, you just click on the resources right there for adjustment counselors, because I realize that information isn't necessarily easy to find. But now you can click on it, and it will show you everybody's name, everything, how you reach them. And if you can go back, I just want to show you a couple of the sites, and then we'll be done. If you go to the Mental Health Issues and Crisis Intervention, a lot of questions I get, and Rich gets, and the other folks that work in this field, "How do I find a therapist? What do I do? How do I know what to do?" So we just went through, if you can scroll down. Yeah, don't delete it. Good. Keep going. And then we just sort of outline what you should do. And we don't give names of specific therapists, but, because we can't do that. But we say, "This is how you can find, and this is what you do if your child gets hospitalized, or if your child needs an acute, short-term treatment." And then we also listed a bunch of mental health sites. And then if you could go to the substance abuse one, so on the substance abuse, we've worked hard to make sure that these things are updated. We wanted parents to be able to, our goal would be to have spaces, places for kids, but we're not there yet. And that'll take another two years. This is for parents to look things up, recovery groups, hospital stays, how you get some 12-step help. Did I miss anything on that?
No, all of that. The other thing that's great about this from the guidance adjustment perspective is, whenever something would come up, I'd reach into my bag of tricks, maybe call Kristin or somebody, just to find some resources. So now for all of us, we can access this, too. You need to learn something about substance abuse, oh, look, learn to cope. This is great for families who are having trouble with their kid. So it's great for everybody in the district. I think that everybody should be really familiar with it, from teachers to administrators to certainly every counselor in the entire district.
I just shared a resource from this site with somebody that asked me about their older kid. And I was like, "Oh, I think we just put something like that in here." So that was a wonderful thing. So we just really wanted to put this out there, get people aware of it, ask, Mary's going to help us roll it out to all the principals, the site councils, the guidance counselors, everybody, because we really want parents in the community to know that this is available to them. And that's it. That's it?
That's it.
So, and I know you'll all memorize every website on here and be familiar with the test.
I was going to say, they don't need to. Click.
That's right.
Click and go.
The guidance department and the adjustment counselor here next to me, Rich, they've just been great, really great. And they're just so important in Milton High School and the other schools, so. And can he come in late tomorrow, because it's 9:30?
It's okay. I'll be fine.
And any questions? All right, we have to have one.
I don't know a question, but, I mean, as someone else on the Health and Wellness, and I haven't been on as long as Ms. Bagley Jones, but she and Mr. Garino put a lot of time in this, and not just putting something out there, but really wanting it the way they wanted it. And we're very careful about how they put it together. So I just, I think it's fantastic. And you just took such care, both of you. This was kind of like something that was really special to you, and took a lot of time making sure it was the way you wanted it. So I just wanted to say that. It looks fantastic. And I love that it's going to help our professionals, as well as parents, as well as kids, to find that information. It's friendly, you know, user-friendly to all of them. Even Ms. Bagley Jones can use it. She knows which clicky thing to go on.
Thank you, Becky. And thanks for everything. And that's it.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you very much. And I'll go back to the other side of the table.
Go on to the school calendar.
School calendar.
Chairman Walker had asked me to speak to the school calendar. And so, obviously, everything that could be said about snow and the weather has been said by everyone in the Boston area and Massachusetts and New England. And so you have a piece in your packet, but on, when you received the material last Friday, I hope that the Commissioner's weekly update, it's not in your packet. If you did not get it last Friday, I'll make sure you get it tomorrow. So for the viewing public, in Massachusetts, children go to school for 180 days. And that is combined with, at the high school level, 990 hours, and at the elementary level, 900 hours. And this had to be, this has to be all documented, passing time, lunchtime, these are instructional hours. And so the commissioner put out a piece as school districts were closing, canceling school for snow, and superintendents and the... canceling school for snow, and superintendents and the parents and teachers were all asking the Commissioner if there would be exceptions made, if perhaps the 180 days or the number of hours would be reduced. And in the piece that I've sent you from the Commissioner on February 13th, the Commissioner said that after you go to school to the last day of June, and if a school district also has used April vacation and Good Friday, then the school district should then contact the Commissioner about extending the day. And if you ever extended the day, it would have to be in a meaningful amount of time. And so, the Commissioner communicates with us around this. You've seen local press about districts that have used all that time, gone through the last day of school, somewhere up to 11, 12, 13 days off. So Chairman Walker had asked me to speak to this. And this is what's going, my recommendation on what we're going to do. To date, we have had seven snow days. The last day of school is currently a half-day on Thursday, June 25th. That leaves us with three possible makeup days, because remember, we go to school through the 30th of June. In the event of one more, if everyone sighs, in the event of one more additional day of no school due to inclement weather, the last day of school would be a half-day on Friday, June 26. Next, in the event of two more additional days of no school due to inclement weather, I would propose a half-day of school. We now have Good Friday off. I would propose that we go to school a half-day on Good Friday, and that would keep the last day of school on Friday, June 26. In the unlikely event of three or more additional days of no school due to inclement weather, I would bring a further proposal back to this committee and work with the MEA, the Milton Teachers Union, around April vacation. But right now, we're not making any proposal. We're making it very clear to the public, I'll put this out in my email blast this week, so that everyone knows if they're, what the last day of school is now, if there's one more snow day, two more snow days. But after our experience with the weather this year, and the Commissioner also recognized school districts, and this school committee and the prior superintendent, Dr. Jafun, should be recognized. The Commissioner recognized school districts that have taken the lead in beginning school before Labor Day. And he urged school districts to adopt that school calendar. And so, next year, Labor Day is the latest it can possibly be. Our calendar person, Dr. Palacek, has worked with me on this. And we go late into June. And so I've given you a proposed 15-16 calendar, but our next school committee meeting, I'm going to be bringing back to you a revised proposal for you to discuss on next year's school calendar. Any questions?
Thank you.
Ms. Sheridan?
I do have a question, sorry. Ms. Gormley, the half-days at the end of the year, could those be, I know they're not going to impact instruction and all that, but to cover time, if they were made full days, would that make a difference? Or does a half-a-day qualify for a day?
Our half-days qualify as a full day.
Okay.
So many hours in a day.
They're not really half-days, right? They're more so.
Right, it's a good question, a good clarifying question. They count as one full school day. But again, we have counted every minute, and when we put the professional development in this year, we've had to document the number of hours that, again, elementary and high school, and you have to submit that to the DESI.
And may I just say one more thing? The good news about this late end of the school year is that the Milton Music Festival and fireworks is going to be on Saturday, June 27th this year. So if you stay in school till the end of June, you get to have fireworks and a festival.
Very good to know.
Ms. Kelly?
That's wonderful news, thank you.
Has nothing to do with me, though.
The 15-16 calendar, has that been distributed to parents yet?
It has. So in my email blast, I'll put out that-
Under?
Yes. And one more note, what this is driving, we've had several meetings talking about summer school. As you well know, we have a thousand children enrolled in different summer school programs. So I've attached the calendars for you, so I want parents to know now, and we'll put it out in the blast tomorrow, that we can't close school and in one day turn around and start summer school. So our summer school programs are beginning on the 6th of July, because it would be near to impossible to have the end of school, and then the next day turn around and begin summer school. There's transferring materials, furniture, and so we will begin the summer school. And that will push up the end. But if you follow the school calendar, it will give families some good time in August, because school starts, Labor Day is in September this year. Can't be any later.
So I would just say, then, I'm just going to put this out there when we're looking at the revised, or proposed revised calendar. Do you know what the last day of summer school would be then, if we're looking at July 6?
I do. I believe August 6.
Okay. So I would just say that as much as I think people are, you know, looking at being a little bit unhappy about the school year going so late, I've heard many, many years of complaints, and I'm sure other people have too, like, "Why can't we wait until after, why can't we start school in September? Then we would have all of August with our families." And now we're pushing summer school to August 6. And I would be a little bit leery of starting school early. I mean, everybody agrees this is an unprecedented, unprecedented snow amount. You know, certainly it could be repeated next year. But if we're ending school so late, to then look at the calendar for next year and start it early, I think it's going to leave a lot of people feeling a little short-changed about some of their summer vacation plans. So I would just think about that when we're looking at that.
That won't be one of our options. Thank you.
It doesn't say on-
Ms. Bagley Jones?
It doesn't say on here about the summer school, right?
It doesn't. Because we, we'll put it out on the web tomorrow, we'll put it out, I'll put it out tomorrow. Friday is the day that we're formalizing the extended special ed services, all of the summer school programs.
So on the recommendations for this year, in the event of additional school days, I'll accept a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation.
Second?
Moved by Mr. Zulis, seconded by Ms. Sheridan. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimes?
Thank you, and I know the hour is getting late. I want to thank the school committee who took the leadership and in the asking us and working with us on our first grade information night. We had a phenomenal first grade information night that you had heard referenced. The first grade choice forms have gone out. The first grade informational presentation is on the web. I would encourage any parent or guardian of a rising first grader who did not attend the event to go to the web. We took all the questions and answers, spent a tremendous amount of time editing all of those and put them on the web. Ms. Kelly picked up a really important correction today. Dr. Palacek, do you want to speak to that correction?
Right, one of the slides in the first grade information night had an inaccuracy in it, which we'll correct on the web tomorrow. We said it correctly at first grade information night, but it doesn't appear correctly on the slide. We said at first grade information night, which is our policy, that in each school, there'll be two English Innovation Pathways classes in the first grade, at least two. And then the rest of the classes will be, depended on the needs of the district and the choices of the parents. On one of the slides, it refers to, rather than the sort of default setup of two, for instance, in the three-unit schools, two English and one French, and then the four-unit schools, two English and two French. It refers to them as a minimum. And that's not true, that's not correct, because not, if, for instance, at the Collicott School, there is no guarantee there'll be a minimum of two French classes. We just know there'll be a minimum of two English. Enrollment will determine whether, how those, there'll be five next year at Cunningham, because, Collicott, sorry, because they're rolling up five kindergarteners, how that will split out. The only piece of our policy is, is a minimum of two English. So we'll correct that slide. We said it properly at first grade night, but it doesn't appear correctly in the presentation, so we'll fix that on the web.
And I, and Ms. Kelly had an excellent point. We're going to remind parents tomorrow about the choice forms. We'll communicate with all the parents and guardians. We have all of their email addresses of rising first graders, and they may have watched the presentation and then leave it and don't go back. And we're going to tell them about the correction tomorrow in an email. So we talked about first grade, we've done our kindergarten information night. All of the parents have come for registration. The incoming kindergarteners will be coming for their screening. A very outstanding accomplishment driven by this school committee and their support of preschool is that, as I spoke to that position, as a proposed cut in the budget, this preschool initiative, which is national, and the Milton Public Schools and the Milton School Committee has embraced the understanding how important preschool is for children starting into their K-12 experience. Under the leadership of Assistant Superintendent Sheen, we have brought together a preschool team across the district. And for the first time, I'm proud to tell you, Assistant Superintendent Sheen is working with the group to, and this has been posted on the web. We're going to note a few corrections that the school committee brought to my attention today. We're going to correct them on the web and get them out to all parents that we're aware of. Again, we might not be able to contact all of them, but if they're viewing tonight, they'll go and see the edits. So this is really a comprehensive, clear place, just like Ms. Bagley Jones's site, that in parents of incoming, who don't have children in the district, or have children in the district and have rising fourth, four or five, three or four-year-olds can go and better understand the preschool options in the Milton Public Schools. So I'm going to turn this over to Assistant Superintendent Sheen to briefly just walk you through it. It was in your packets, but this is really a first for the Milton Public Schools, and I think a huge leap and jump into building a very strong preschool program in our district. This is, we're passing out the corrected version to you now. I want to thank Member Kelly and Walker for bringing a few issues to our attention today. That's the value of sending these packets out and the time that you put into reviewing the materials.
So as Superintendent Gormley just noted, we have brought together a team to develop an overview of our preschool programs across the district. And I would like to give special thanks to Dr. Elaine McNeil-Gormai and Principal, Mrs. Holly Concannon-
Thank you.
-for their work in developing this. And we also had input from the other principals and from our preschool teacher in the Child Study Program here at Milton High School, Mrs. Mullin. So also, as Superintendent Gormley previously noted, we, you know, many years ago, we had one preschool program that was housed here at Milton High School. And for a number of years now, we have had an integrated preschool program at the Collicott. And the Child Study Pre-Kindergarten Program has continued at Milton High School. The advancement budget allowed us to begin a pilot program that was housed at the Tucker School last year. It's a district-wide program. And the advancement budget allowed for the purchase of instructional materials for a program that would be offered to students who may not have otherwise attended a preschool program. Students would be able to attend one, two, or three of the three sessions offered throughout the school year. It's offered Mondays and Wednesdays this year, and for, it's a morning program. So next year's, the FY16 Advancement Initiative now is allowing us to further expand the Kindergarten Readiness Pilot Program. This district-wide program, again, housed at the Tucker Elementary School. And we now will have a full-time teacher. We're going to be able to purchase additional instructional materials. And we will also have a, two sessions of students, so that we can support approximately 24 students in that program. So, given that we have not only expanded the Kindergarten Readiness Pilot Program, I failed to mention that we also expanded the Integrated Preschool Program this year. We were able to offer an additional sub-separate program after identifying the needs of the community, children who had been identified through assessment and through early intervention. So the three of our programs, they are, they have many things about them that are, that are consistent. And you can see, you know, the bullets indicate that all three of the programs will have the same curriculum, and that is the creative curriculum. Right now, the pilot program has that curriculum in our integrated programs at the Collicott School. And this is being implemented this year. It is a comprehensive preschool program that develops readiness skills. It addresses all of the developmental domains for children three or four years old, and really provides some excellent planning for teachers day-to-day. And we're hearing very positive things about this. It's aligned with the frameworks and learning standards. So as you can see, students will have the opportunity to engage in the core content areas through this program. All three programs will have a small ratio of students to adults. We have instructional aides or educational assistants, assistance supporting all three programs. The Integrated Preschool and Child Study Pre-Kindergarten Programs will have a set tuition. The program housed at the Tucker, the Readiness Pilot Program, will be based on the identification of students by the principals across the district, as well as our family outreach liaison. So that, there will not be a fee for that program. It's the second year of the pilot, and so we would like to continue the development of that program. All programs will follow the school calendar for kindergarten students. And the, again, this is posted on the website, and the revisions will be posted tomorrow. But we have given the link, so that parents of the Integrated Preschool Program and the Child Study Program can access a pre-registration form. And that gives the, that gives us information about the families, their interests in participating in the programs. Depending on the numbers, we'll determine whether or not we hold lotteries at the, for the Integrated Preschool Program, and as well as the Child Study Program. Okay. So here are the features of each of the three programs. And it gives parents information about the age of students, the tuition costs, and again, how to access the link, so that they can preregister. Once we have identified the numbers and look at enrollments, then we will, again, determine in two of the programs whether or not there'll be a lottery, there'll be a waiting list. And then, once parents, once students are selected, then they will be guided to the registration. So this is really the first time that we have posted information about all three programs. And I think that parents are going to find this also as a, as a great resource. And it will really clarify some of the questions that they've had over the years. Some of the, so our program here at the high school has been a very popular program, but it seems that many parents have registered by word of mouth. And we want all of our students to have a fair and equitable opportunity to participate in programs across the district. And hope that all of our programs are going to further provide opportunities- are going to further provide opportunities to close proficiency gaps and support early literacy initiatives.
And one other note, I was remiss, that School Committee Member Becky Padera is part of our, School Committee Member Becky Padera is part of our team. We meet at the Tucker, and so, again, under the leadership of Janet Sheehan, now this is all brought together in one place. All of these individuals are learning from one another, and it's only going to benefit children and to Assistant Superintendent Sheehan's point, work on early literacy and closing those proficiency gaps. Becky?
This is great.
Yeah, I would just like to say one other thing, and I think you mentioned her before, but our, our family liaison has done a great job, Ms. McKenna, at finding these students that would otherwise be at home and not in preschool. This is, a lot of these, you know, especially our new program, is targeting some of these students that would otherwise not be in a preschool setting, and they did a really great job at helping find those students, and she, in particular. And also, Dr. Elaine Germai has done a great job leading up this program and assessing how the students are doing and their progress and reporting back on that. And if any school committee member wants to stop by Tucker and see the little space they've created, it's just beyond adorable. But, yeah, it's, they, they went above and beyond, I think, what we had started off talking about, and they've just gone above and beyond in creating this program, and it's grown. Just, I mean, Sheehan, you can say how much it's grown. I think we started off with just a handful of kids, and already they are, have like a waiting list at this point.
Full capacity.
Yeah. It's, it's fantastic. So I can't say enough good things about it, so.
Ms. Sheridan?
Is this on the web? Is this on the MiltonPS.org website?
It is, and we've also made an adjustment to the website so that parents can more easily access information about the preschool. It, it's posted on the web, and as, as we said, there are some revisions that need, that have been made. The, the revised document was just, was just handed out to you, but those revisions will appear on the website tomorrow.
And it's on the homepage. It's not tucked away, so.
So what tab is it under?
It's not. It's on the homepage.
It is, it is for now. It is for now, but it will be under student registration, and it will also be under preschool. So when you go to the, to the dropdown for schools, you'll see preschool.
Ms. Kelly?
This is terrific. Thank you very much for all the time and effort that went into putting it together. Is this something that, and I don't even know if we still do flyers and backpacks, but is this something that could go home via that method, or even, I don't know, the, in, I don't know, the different places around town?
Yes.
Just so that we could try and get it different ways rather than just on the website?
Good. I think that's a great idea to send it home.
We'll work with the preschool alliance there.
Yep.
Susan Dolan and get it out.
And the libraries, too, would be a good place to have it.
Ms. Kelly?
So, given the success of the pilot program, and we're still considering just the one classroom, no?
I think, well, we're, we're increasing the time, but are we?
So next, for the next year, it will be, you'll either sign up for a five morning or a five afternoon.
So it'll be two classes?
Two classes, yes.
But it'll be more time and more classes.
Is that not clear on that?
No, 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 it is, but, but I'm trying to understand, what do we have now? So you said there's a waiting list for the program we have now, which is what?
Two mornings per week.
Okay.
And it's three sessions. They're divided into three 10-week sessions for the school year.
Yep.
And their hopes, hopes were, depending on the number of children, they could, they could sign up 12 children for the first session, another 12 for the second. It, it so happens that some have, have stayed in the sessions and been able to benefit from more than one session.
So I guess, given, it looks like there's, you could accommodate in the proposed next year's 24 students.
Yes.
What's the waiting list in this year's group?
Good question.
I think it's just a couple.
Okay.
And, and they will likely go into the third session. Those children will have an opportunity in the third session.
And I thought the success, Ms. Kelly, was the number of students that returned the second session, that are staying with the program.
Yep. That's great. Congratulations.
Yeah, this really is great. To the school committee. So briefly, the happenings. We, I think we spoke to kindergarten, preschool, and first grade. The program choice forms have gone out. This is a big night in the elementary schools. We're talking about K-1, two, but a big night for the viewing audience, parents and guardians. Do we, many of you may remember the Growth and Development Presentation. This is a rite of passage for our parents and children of fifth graders, 6:30 at the Glover School. Dr. Madora, our history teacher at Milton High School, and lacrosse coach, when Dr. Bonacci retired after a long career, being our physician consultant. Dr. Madora is now our consultant, and she will be doing that night for parents of fifth-grade children on March 9th at the Glover at 6:30. I would urge parents and guardians watching, parent-teacher conferences are coming up on March 12th. You'll be contacted by your school principal and teachers, but again, you should contact your schools. Again, MFE celebration, I sent out an email. I think that they're almost sold out of tickets. March 14th, I wish them the best of luck on what's going to be an exciting night. We have Milton High School greeters, we have Milton High School band, we have my Milton High School singers, and we have students speaking at Fund a Need. So there's unbelievable teacher and administrative support, school committee support from the Milton Public Schools. Thank you. In closing, perhaps, Mr. Walker, you were there. I wasn't. The boys' ice hockey last Friday night, and maybe speak to the girls' ice hockey?
I can speak to the boys. Kind of a heartbreaker. So they were down 2-0 in the first, at the end of the first period. They played a phenomenal second period where we played almost the whole period in Marshfield's, beyond Marshfield's blue line. They scored three goals, so they were up 3-2 at the end of the second period, but in the third period, we fell a little short. The coach pulled the goalie a little early, I thought.
(laughing).
My opinion.
Chairman, Ice Hockey Walker, use the word.
They scored, they scored an empty, empty goal-goal. But anyway, it was, it was exciting.
Only from a hockey player and fan could you get that detail. You're not going to get that from me.
I'm surprised you didn't stop the game.
Chairman Walker used the word for the boys' ice hockey. You used the word inspired.
It was amazing.
Inspired.
It was amazing. It's one of the best, one of the best periods I've ever seen Milton Boys Hockey play. I mean, they were unbelievable.
Coach Noonan and those boys. And the girls' ice hockey, I think you probably, even not being there, give the best detail.
They won, won nothing in a shootout.
Double-o.
So are we going to Bourne on Friday?
Bourne, Bourne at 5 o'clock this Saturday night.
Okay.
Playing Wellesley.
I'll be there.
Excellent.
That's, that's going to be a really good game. We tied Wellesley one, one time this year, and, and we beat them, so they're actually seeded above us. That's going to be a, that's going to be a really good game.
And in closing, I have one thing to say. It is amazing, not being an athlete, and Chairman Walker corrects me about the court and the field and the ice, but my observation is, it really is amazing to be in an American high school, and when these student athletes go to tournament, the other 1,000 students all think they're on the ice, or on the court, or on the field, and the level of enthusiasm and pride that this whole phenomenon brings to a high school is really inspiring. So to, to the families, to the coaches, to the students, to all the individuals who support the clubs and activities and athletics, to the parent who spoke so eloquently to that tonight, it does create the citizens of the world. Thank you.
Can I add to that?
Sure.
Really quickly, the girls' basketball team made it to tournament in the first time since 2003, I think. They did lose, but they made it to tournament.
11 years, yep.
First time in a long time.
Okay. Superintendent's Goals. Just a little context. You have these in your, in your packet. This is, this is the development of another two-year cycle, so these goals would be in effect from July 1, 2014, through June 30, 2016. So we would expect to do a mid-cycle review probably in October this year, and then a final summative evaluation in probably October of 2016. So as you can see, the goals continue to parallel the advancement initiatives and the goals that the school committee developed in its planning sessions earlier in the year. So certainly willing to have discussion, but I'd like to get these adopted tonight if we can. Ms. Bagley Jones?
On the very first one, I like the second page where it shows the gap.
Yep.
That's the, is that specific?
Yes.
And I like that.
And thank you very much to Courtney Miller, who is our resident expert on
Perfect.
proficiency gaps.
And then on the other one, reduce participation gaps. I, I just would like that to be more specific, Mary, for you in terms of is there a pre and post numbers? Are you going to have specific outreach that you're going to do? And then implement a comprehensive plan for all students around the social health, which of course, I totally support. I'm just curious, like, how you're going to get that done by January 2016, and maybe it can be broken down a little bit? I don't know. And then how are you going to get 100% of teachers who will be able to demonstrate proficiency? What, what do we used to say? If you expect it, you have to inspect it? How are you going to know that 100% of teachers demonstrate proficiency in writing, reading, and understanding, not in reading, but reading, understanding, implementing IEP goals in the STEM curriculum? I, I like it, but I just want to make sure it's realistic and can be accurately portrayed.
So do you believe any of those are showstoppers with regard to a vote this evening?
No.
Okay.
I'm just putting it out there to say to Mary.
I will detail those and
It's more for you.
Report out at the next meeting.
Yeah, it's more for you, Mary, than for us. No, I think they look great.
Other discussion? Do I have a motion?
Some room.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Sheridan. Sexiest by Ms. Bagley Jones. On the motion, all in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. I'm going to do the budget update next time. We're, we never adopted the Bagley Jones rule of trying to end by 10, but I'm going to try to get us out of here as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Finance Subcommittee?
Yes. I think first we have an approval of vendor warrant. Dr. Pavlichak?
We have two vendor warrants since our last meeting. Warrant number 35, which was last week, February 26th, in the amount of $429,994.94. That's the first one.
So I would move that we approve vendor warrant number?
35.
35. In the amount that Dr. Pavlichak just relayed, because I didn't write it down.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Kelly, seconded by Mr. Zulus. Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Staying. 501.
And the second is warrant number 36, dated March 5th, in the amount of $412,456.34.
So I would move that we approve vendor warrant number 36, in the amount that Dr. Pavlichak just relayed.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Staying. 501. Thank you.
And then, are we going over this next item?
It's just information. Yeah?
Yep. Okay. Do you want to go over it, seeing that you are?
Well, we, about two weeks ago, we received more information on the fiscal '16 cost of the SRO. The agreement we have with the selectmen did, does reference that in fiscal '16, we would pay the full cost of the officer. I think it would be fair to say none of us expected a 38% increase in the cost, but it is what it is. So you have that in your packet. I think the total amount is $83,782.15. We discussed this in Finance Subcommittee on Tuesday, and we did ask the superintendent to communicate with the police chief and see whether we could perhaps get a cost that was closer to what we budgeted, which I think is in the $60,000 to $65,000 range. So I, I just wanted to make sure that the committee was informed. As I said, we just recently got this information, and we may have more to report at a later date. Ms. Kelly?
But also, just to note that this is a higher cost than we have in our present '16 budget, and therefore, we're going to need to find
That's correct.
That funding gap if nothing moves with the Board of Selectmen, so.
That's correct.
It's just to be aware of that.
Ms. Padera?
So is this going to be the cost every year? Because some of these, I didn't know if some of these costs are one-time money, or like, I mean, so like the education cost seems
Every year.
That's every year?
That's the quinnville.
The agreement ends in '16, so the whole relationship is up for discussion after that.
You mean the contract for the SRO is?
The agreement, the agreement.
But this is, so what I'm trying to find out is this is what, instead of $65,000, this is more what it would cost baseline, and then it would probably increase?
Correct, by cost of living increases and any other. But actually, actually, all of the salary-related ones will increase if the base salary increases, so holiday would increase.
So all these things are yearly costs to the, that's added to the salary?
Yes.
Wow.
So can I just ask, is this specific to the particular person who's filling the role, or this would be sort of the box into which anyone would move in and out?
So, so, yes and no.
Okay.
So the base salary would be dependent on their length of service. Holiday would be related to the base. Night differential would be related to the base. Longevity would be related to their length of service, and education would be related to their education credentials.
Okay.
Okay. Transportation and Traffic Safety Subcommittee?
Walker?
Yes?
One other, we're not discussing this year's budget, but one thing I just want to point out from the governor's budget that we are, we're talking about now, we have a nine-C cut in kindergarten this year. The, our kindergarten grant was cut from $153,000 to $119,000 mid-year, so we have a $33,000 cost we're going to have to absorb this current fiscal year due to the cuts in funding from the State House to make up the fiscal '15 deficit. In the governor's fiscal '16 budget, the kindergarten grant program is eliminated. So if that holds, that would be a $153,000 deficit in next year's budget. So we will have to watch that one carefully. Again, it's the first step in the, in the process, but I'm just, they have just been posting it, and the kindergarten, the kindergarten, not enrichment, but expansion grant, it's called, is funded at zero in the governor's budget for next year.
So with regard to that potential elimination in fiscal '16, for the March 18th meeting, can we do some what-if scenarios about the impact for the committee?
And, and we have, for the school committee to know, when we present to the parents, we always mention that this tuition is based on
Yeah.
the full-day kindergarten grant. We, we mentioned it. It's not the highlight of the program, but we do make parents aware, and it is in the present, it's in the presentation too, that it's pending the full-day kindergarten grant. That kind of reduction, we've seen That kind of reduction, we've seen reductions before in the advocacy of parents across the state and the kindergarten advocates led by Ada Rose Marin proved before to be able to bring back some of those funds. But that would be, I've never seen it completely eliminated before.
Or even proposed to be eliminated. Sorry.
I've never seen it proposed complete elimination before.
Many of the grant programs are consolidated also and reduced. I mean, we have MCAS support grants, we have teacher quality grants, and a few other things like that. They have, in the proposed budget, they have been rolled together and reduced by 25%. So there may be some more limited availability of some of the other grants that we get on an annual basis or apply for on an annual basis. Again, it's a preliminary proposal. We'll see what sticks. But that is, at the moment, that's out there, at least based on my reading of what came out at 5:30 this afternoon.
Transportation and traffic safety Subcommittee?
Yes, I'll give you a very, very brief update. We have met on two occasions. We're proceeding really on two tracks. The first is to identify issues for each of the schools. We have identified issues for the Glover, Tucker, and Collicott. And at our next meeting, we hope to identify the issues for Pierce and Cunningham. I'd characterize the issues as either specific or global. The specific issues, we're referring to Jake Smith to deal with specifically. And the global issues, we need to determine how best to address, whether that to be to address, and we'll make a recommendation to this committee on how to address them, whether it be through the Police Department or the Traffic Commission or the DCR or the state. And then the other avenue that we're pursuing, one of the members of the group is Jana Lindhart from the Department of Transportation, State Department of Transportation, Massachusetts, Safe Routes to School. And we have given her the information, all the addresses of each of the elementary schools and the middle schools, so that she can prepare walking assessments. And they will prepare walking assessments for each of the schools, so we can identify some of the issues there. And also, they will identify and we can, they will map out our safe walking routes, the safe walking routes. So they're going to help us with that. So those are the things we're pursuing. We're looking for members from Collicott, one of our Collicott members is, so we're going to need someone from Collicott and from Pierce to bring our group back up to full capacity.
No old business and next meeting agenda items? Ms. Kelly?
The grade level assessments, is that something that we would be getting an update on? I don't want to, I don't know what the normal timing would be, but you mentioned it earlier, and I think it's an opportunity for us.
Good.
And whether it's next meeting or some meeting in the future, hopefully before I leave, but that would be nice.
And I might take you up on April for that. I may take you up on not the next meeting in March, but the next one.
Okay. And then just wondering whether, perhaps not this year, but the science assessments, that should be part of this as we move forward on a regular?
We'll do the whole picture for you. Language on the topic.
No, if you have them, that's great.
Great.
But if you're not ready to do that, that's fine. But maybe going forward into next year, that should be part of.
Partially done. I'd like to update that for you.
Ms. Sheridan?
Just school committee minutes. We haven't approved any in a while, so if we can get those back on the agenda for next, if that's possible.
We'll take a look at that. And could we get an update on the outreach liaison work?
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session, not to return to public session for the purpose of discussing Ask Me Collective bargaining strategy, the discussion of which in public session would be detrimental to our bargaining position.
Some more?
Thank you. Roll call, Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Bagley-Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Padera?
Yes.
Ms. Sheridan?
Yes.
Mr. Walker, yes, we are adjourned.